So we can, yep, so we're gonna, alright, we'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and call to order. So Maya, can you please stop the score?
Sure. Trustee Hack, trustee Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Rocha.
Here.
Vice President Lathan.
Here.
President Lewis.
Present. Alright, so with that, we will enter into closed session.
Do I have to take anything?
We have a transatlantic...
Okay, so we will call to order and reestablish quorum. Maya, would you mind reestablishing quorum?
Trustee Hag. Trustee Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Rocha.
Here.
Vice President Lathan.
Here.
President Lewis.
Present. So, item A, reestablishment of quorum, I'm sorry. Item B, reports from closed session, there's nothing to report. Item C, flag salute. Trustee Hernandez, would you mind leading us?
Absolutely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sunday.
Alright, so next up is the approval of minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting, October 25th, 2023.
I move approval, sir.
Okay, so I have motion on the floor for approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion on the floor, properly seconded. Any discussion? All in, uh... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Item E, approval of minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting, November 8th, 2023. Um, any discussion?
I move approval.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor for approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion on the floor, properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Alright, next up is the superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening. As you can see, we have a very full house. Welcome, everyone. So I will forego my superintendent's comments. I think you have a lot more people who want to talk to the board this evening, but I do want to wish everyone a very happy, um, joyous holiday season. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alright, so next up, item five, school reports. There are none. Six, it looks like we have a little bit of a stack. I'm surprised. Um, so item six A, uh, these are individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from the public. The first one is Celia Medina, I believe Owens.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good evening, board. I'm Celia Medina Owens. I am a proud Antioch parent. I have students who have gone to Marsh Park and Antioch Edge. I saw Edge here. So thank you. I want to say that Antioch educators always stand up for our students in Antioch. They deserve the best. That means they deserve the best resources, the best materials, the best tools, the best support staff, and the best coworkers. How do you get the best in Antioch? I'll ask, I'm asking you all. How do you get the best? I think you know the answer. You pay them what they deserve. Not only pay, they also need full benefits. I'm gonna tell you a secret. You're gonna lose a lot of educators next door, Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh has full benefits for all. Families, singles, partners. Full benefits. They also got an 8.5 COLA last school year. They also ended the years of service. So, for example, I, a teacher of 20 years, could go to another district and get my 20 years of service accredited for. If you're not smart, Antioch board, you're going to lose Antioch educators and support staff. Our students cannot lose one more teacher. Our classes show the impact that lack of educators have. Our Antioch students deserve the best. That means you need to step up, pay them what they deserve, give them their benefits, and provide the support they need for their special education students, their ESL students, their EL learners, and the support staff. I, as a parent, am demanding that you give them what they need and deserve. If not, you are all up for an election. And we will vote you out. Do right by our students, do right by our educators. Give them their full benefits, give them their COLA, give them the support they need for their SPED, ELL students, and provide the support our Antioch students need. We deserve the best in Antioch, and you need to prove it. Thank you.
Next up is Velma Wilson.
Hi, Velma.
Why y'all do me like that? Happy holidays. Yes. Wow, this room is packed. But I will say, um... So I do have a lot of sentiment to all of the educators here. But I want to tell you all, we need you. We need to make sure that we're not failing our students. Be present in the moment, making sure that every child receives the proper and due education. I know you need support. I'm proudly there to support you on many of these campuses, and I will continually to do that until God says otherwise. Now, MLK Day is coming up, January 15th. Congratulations to all of those that have submitted an art or essay project to you educators who made sure that those kids did some amazing entries. I have seen a few. I'm supposed to abstain from the voting, and so I'm gonna let the judges do the judging. But we have an enormous amount of entries that we're gonna be going through, and it's because of you educators that made sure that those entries were in there and they were done with the spirit of excellence, celebrating the life and the legacy of Dr. King. Thank you to all the parents that have showed up for our end of this semester, for our parent advisory meetings, for the AAPAC, for DLEC. And for those teachers that are on the, um... That are on your ELAC at your school site, or you are on the AAPAC, make sure you're there and be a voice for what's happening on your campus. We want to try to make sure that we are visible and we know what's going on, but we are hearing an astronomical amount of complaints that the educators that are on those sites are not showing up for the families in these type of settings. So we need your support. And if you haven't joined the PTA, join, because the T in PTA is teacher. Anyway, Black History Month. Also, I want to announce in this last few seconds, Antioch High and Deer Valley High marching bands will be live at the Chase Center. Yes, I'm repping my Chase Center jacket, performing for African-American Heritage Night on February 23rd. Please see me so you can get your tickets, and let's support our own. This will be the first time our marching bands collectively will be live at the Chase Center, performing for over 18,000-plus fans. And we want to make sure we're supporting and showing out for the fierce Wolverines and the always mighty Antioch Panthers.
Alright, thank you. Uh, next up is item B, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from district employees. There are quite a few. So the first is Amanda Freitas.
Good evening. I think that our teachers here in Antioch deserve fully paid health benefits. We also deserve COLA. Things, we're all being affected by what's going on. Insurance rates, not just health, other insurance rates are going up. Groceries, gas, rent, everything's going up. And if we want to retain our teachers, if we want to attract teachers, then we have to be competitive with our neighboring districts. And there are a lot of neighboring districts that are giving fully paid health benefits. I don't understand what we're saving the money for. We have a ton of money in reserves, unrestricted, restricted. We're not giving it to the schools. We keep cutting our budgets. I'm paying more money out of pocket this year than I ever have for my classroom, because there's no money there. Um, I also needed to throw in, totally unrelated, how disappointed I am that we're giving part of Fremont's campus away to Sierra School. Our campus has grown tremendously this year. We were utilizing all of our portables. Now our support staff, like Wellness Together, she has nowhere to take her, the students to counsel now. Our Mindful Life Rise Up Groups, their portable was taken. They have nowhere to do their Rise Up Groups. If they want to go somewhere, they have to share with the counselor. If they're sharing with the counselor, and the counselor needs to counsel a student, where are they supposed to take that student? We are out of room. We lost our computer lab this year, because we had to move in class to the computer lab. So when state testing comes, where am I supposed to take the students to get to that 95%? After-school program was using those. It's really hard as a teacher to do any work in your classroom after school. The after-school program has to come in. And let me tell you, I don't get enough prep time to do everything that I need to do during my contract hours. So I, I'm sure there's nothing you could do about that now, because they're already starting to prep for Sierra School to come in, but it's just very disappointing that it was thrown at us that, starting in January, we were losing three of our classrooms. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Next up is Leslie Adams.
Hello, school board and district members. I'm Leslie Adams, and I'm from Sutter Elementary School. I started off this week feeling anxious and depressed, because we got an email stating that you didn't have enough funds, you know, for our proposals. And then I come to find out you have $34 million, which is a lot of money. And, you know, you can afford to fund, fully fund, family health benefits. It's just a small cost, you know, in all that amount that you have. You can also afford to pay for full librarians so that kids can check out a book every week instead of every other week. I know you want to support reading, and kids need books, access to books to be able to read, and so they really should, we really should have full-time librarians. We also need computers in the high schools. More students need computers so that, you know, kids can access, you know, their information, and, you know, they can also be more proficient in computers if everybody has a computer in the high school. We also need more resource specialists so that they can have reasonable caseloads, because they are overloaded. You know, it would be helpful for kindergarten teachers to have aides, because they work with small kids and, you know, lower TK class sizes, and also, you know, upper-grade class sizes. You know, this is a season of giving, and I hope you value us enough to give us a reasonable cost of living increase that we are requesting at 100% health benefits. Thank you.
Uh, next is Veronica, I believe, Ayala.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Veronica Ayala. I'm an eighth-grade math teacher at Park Middle. Um, and I'm here to speak my piece regarding medical benefits. I am currently the only one in my household providing benefits for my family, and I will be the only breadwinner, as my husband will be losing his job soon. The price tag for medical benefits has skyrocketed and has been chipping $900 away from my paycheck monthly, and this January, it will jump to $1,100. I do not take Kaiser. Instead, I take PPO benefits through Anthem Blue Cross. The PPO plan provides better oncology care for my husband with leukemia, who needs specialized blood tests, regular doctor visits, and a chemotherapy drug that regularly costs $15,000 a month, though the insurance has made those pills $20 a month. Without the insurance, I'd have to pull out a second mortgage just to keep him alive. I'm blessed to be in good health, but need to keep myself healthy in order to provide for my family and attend school daily to prevent period subbing and provide consistency for my students. I, like my colleagues in the district, work hard for our students and oftentimes work for free, providing providing before- and after-school help, planning for field trips, often taking those items home to plan for, even grading on the weekends to make sure that grades are updated. The pandemic has taught the world that we need teachers. We are the driving force of society, and for this, I humbly ask that you invest in us and consider full family medical benefits. Thank you.
Next is Jamie, I believe, Liu Shin.
Pretty good. Thank you. It's okay. I've had that name for 23 years, and I still spell it wrong sometimes. My kids call me Miss Liu. I am a second-year teacher at Belshaw Elementary, and I humbly want to invite anyone from the district or the board to visit my classroom and meet my amazing students. Not to mention that, over the past few months, I have a new student almost every three or four weeks who cannot speak English. I do not have an aide. I am not bilingual, although I'm doing my best with Google Translate. I'm not saying that I really would love you to come and meet my kids. This is a cost-of-living analysis, and it did take me a long time to make. A lot of research went into this. This is what it would look like to live in Antioch with my two boys. To keep it simple and conservative, it does not include any extracurricular activities, vacations, pet costs, health or auto insurance deductibles, household furnishings, electronics, college savings funds, charitable donations, or, as timely at the moment, a Christmas fund. I have a college education that came at great cost while my children were toddlers. My parents were not educated. Not to mention the additional and costly schooling, training, state assessments required to become a teacher, and then to move up the pay scale. I believe that I should be able to live a modest and comfortable life on my salary. We are all here, board, district, everyone in this room, everyone in the hall, and the many people who could not attend because of other obligations. We are all here because we care about educating the youth of our community. I am passionate about teaching six-year-olds to read, but passion does not pay my bills.
Next is Rita Lansky.
Hello. My name is Rita Lansky, and I'm a teacher at Dozier-Libby Medical High School. I just want to share how important it is that certificated employees receive the 9.5% raise as well as the fully paid family benefits that AEA is requesting. Without these improvements, AUSD will not be able to retain its teachers. Sorry. You made me a little emotional. Yeah, so when we have open positions at our schools, it's the students who suffer since they either don't have a qualified teacher for a certain subject or because other teachers are forced to period sub, period sub to cover open positions at each school. So, for example, the last two years, we had open positions at Dozier-Libby. In the last year, school year, I period-subbed over 30 times. I don't have seniority. Obviously, it's my third-year teaching. But over 30 times is an excessive amount of period subbing. And it's not only difficult for me when I need my prep time to grade, to lesson plan, to do all the things that a teacher needs to do, but also challenging for students because I'm unable to complete those necessary components of my job at the same level that I would be if I had my prep time. So without teachers, which is sure to happen with AUSD. When AUSD underpays us and doesn't provide families with paid health insurance, students are the ones who suffer. They do not receive the same quality of education when schools are understaffed. AUSD must give certificated and classified employees fully paid family benefits in order to compete with neighboring districts and to retain teachers. I, myself, want to start a family someday, and I'm nervous to do so. And if my districts aren't willing to pay me fairly and provide fully paid family benefits, I'll be forced to consider finding a district who will. Educators deserve to be able to live in the same area that they work, and students deserve to have qualified, outstanding educators. Better pay and better benefits, by which I mean a salary and benefits that our educators can actually live off of are key to ensuring both in our district. That's all.
Next is Maria Villanueva.
Good evening, board. Sorry. I have too much to say. The first I want to do is I want to share with you a story from one of my fellow educators at my site. I'm a sixth-grade teacher at Jack London Elementary, and this is from one of our kindergarten teachers who could not be here today. She said, "Hello, school board members and fellow teachers. I wish I could be reading this to you in person. I am writing to discuss the matter of the district and AEA's impact, impasse regarding contract negotiations. Today, in my school site staff meeting, we discussed power struggles with students and making sure to make school a welcoming place for everyone. I fully agreed with the materials presented. As a kindergarten teacher, this is one of my favorite parts of my job, forming relationships and teaching my students to do the same to make our classroom a place of love and support. But board members, how am I supposed to fully do this when our class sizes are so high? I had a little girl today say to me, 'How come you don't smile at me?' I do realize this is something that I need to work on, but also I realize it's hard to give all of your love to 25-plus kids. We need lower class sizes. We need comparable pay as well. I commute from Livermore, and as a single earner supporting my mother, salary amount is definitely a factor in where I work, as I imagine it is for a lot of us teachers. I can't even imagine what it would be like for many of the teachers trying to support families with a cost-of-living increase but not a pay increase to match. I urge you, school board, to consider just one teacher's opinion, but remember that there are many who face the same challenges. Our students deserve the best teachers, but how can we give them the best when we are running on empty? Signed, a concerned kindergarten teacher." And as a sixth-grade teacher, I know for a fact... I can't even tell you how many teachers pump money, our own money, into our classrooms. When the district decided to close the libraries at the elementary level, a lot of teachers started a classroom library. And guess where those books came from? Our pockets. A lot of those books don't come back, so we replenish them with our own money. If there's a treat to be given, it's the teachers doing it. And there are students who come to school hungry. We have snacks for them, and we slip it to them so the other kids don't see. That comes from our own money. All the time spent grading, preparing lesson plans because we don't have subs sometimes, we have to do that on our own time. So I urge you to please, please take a look at what we're asking for. I don't think we're... Any of us went into teaching to become millionaires, but we should... We do deserve to be able to support our families. Thank you.
Next is Lisa Henley.
Hello. I have been teaching kindergarten at MNO Grant for 26 years. Along with so many other teachers, I have more than one student with extreme behaviors: autism, ADHD, pandemic, abuse, whatever it is. We have really troubled kids on our campus. Regularly, I'm getting hit, kicked, yelled at. Every day, I'm trying to protect the rest of my class from the students who throw pencil boxes, backpacks, shoes, chairs, even tip-over double desks. Remember, this is general ed kindergarten with no aide. For the first time in 26 years, I've evacuated my class into my teaching partner's class, disrupting her whole class just to protect my students. So I came here to tell you we need counseling-enriched classrooms on every elementary campus now, immediately. So that's what I came here to tell you. But then, I read that AUSD is refusing to continue negotiations for a fair contract. It was like a slap in the face. With what's going on in my classroom, I'm struggling, and I love teaching. It's... And then you add the cost of benefits. I have two kids to go to college next year. It's a struggle. And on top of that, I feel like AUSD is already making money off my back by pushing two extra kids into my classroom when they should have stopped at 24. I don't want the $20 for having those extra kids. I want 9.5% raise, and I want fully covered benefits. Merry Christmas.
Next up is Leslie McNapp.
Good evening, superintendent Nanello and board and all the fantastic AEA people in public and everybody, just thanks. I am a proud first-grade teacher at Lone Tree, and each day, I'm in awe of my students and my colleagues at that school. But that being said, I have to say that I'm also in awe of the things that we still need in our school and in the districts. And our students must have fully-staffed schools where they have counselors and psychologists and librarians and aides. And yes, we do have a librarian, but I think many people are unaware that our librarian is only here for four hours a day, and that's not enough time for her to do all the duties that a librarian needs to do. So she has to whiz through a story, and there's not time for people to check books out because she doesn't have time to manage. So only, like, the older kids can check out books. Anyways, we also only have one counselor and one psychologist at our site. And at elementary school, you would think that kids don't have problems and need that kind of help, but the reality is, is they do, and a lot of children get wet from their grown-ups' storms, is what I like to say, because a lot of kids are dealing with the traumas and the emotions of the grown-ups at their house. And then we deal with it every day. And every morning, we undo the night before. And we really need more than just one counselor and more than one psychologist. And I hear about how in high school, they're telling everyone, "Well, you'll get one counselor for 500 students. Okay, let's get them college and career-ready for that." Okay. Anyways, we also need smaller classes. Like I said, I know that I'm only in first grade, and they're little, tiny people. But I'm pretty sure that I'm confident that I speak for all teachers when I can say that we need to have smaller classes so that we can reach all the students and their needs. We all would love to differentiate our instruction, but it's not easy to facilitate that when the class sizes are so large, and many classrooms can't accommodate those sizes. Finally, teachers have been asking for a salary increase and to have healthcare fully paid for their families. Healthcare insurance is bananas, and it's criminal in itself, and we can't afford it. Other neighboring districts are doing this for their teachers, and so we're all aware of it. The money is there. The district can afford all of these things. I think the district thinks we don't know about it, but we do. And so the cat's out of the bag, and we've seen the data that shows that the money is there. And the students are worth it. So I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
So we have time for one more before we reach the 30-minute mark, correct?
Let them speak.
At 25? No, we have a time limit on the front, and people will have, at the end, to finish. So next is Casey Graham.
Hello. My name is Casey Graham, and I've been a teacher for 32 years and 24 of them in this district. It's been a while since I stood at this podium. One of the most memorable times is when I was receiving Teacher of the Year award, and my three daughters sat against that very wall reading Little House on the Prairie. But they're not so little anymore. Two of them are now teachers. And last year, while they were in their credential program, they had to vet three districts that maybe they would consider teaching at. So they chose AUSD because that's where I work, and that's where they went to school. Chico Unified because that's where they did their credential program. And San Luis Obispo because that was a place that they'd like to work someday. And when they did that class project, our district came in last as to a potential place for a brand-new person to be teaching based on class size, pay and benefits, rate of pay in relation to the cost of living in each prospective area, and teacher attrition for new teacher attrition. So our district lost out on having two bright, young teachers, my girls, due to those factors as they chose to both work in Chico. I want our district to attract excellent teachers, and as long as we're not competitive with the benefits, class size, and pay rate, we're going to continue to be last on the list of people who apply. As for the benefits request to be paid full by the district, that's a no-brainer. We have $34 million in unrestricted funding available. The cost would be approximately $1.2 million to make this happen. All we're trying to do is stay competitive to provide current and potential future employees with what many district directors already offer. If we fail to do this, we're going to continue to suffer with vacancies, and educators can go just a few miles down the road and get those types of things. The last point I want to make is class size. Currently, I work at Live Oak and have been there for four years. But prior to that, I was at Dozier-Libby for 12. And my class sizes at Dozier-Libby were always maxed out at 38 per class, and the class length was 90 minutes. When it came to Live Oak, the class size maxes at 20, and the class length is 45 minutes. So I assumed if I recycled lessons from Dozier-Libby in a 90-minute class and used them at my 45-minute class, it would take two full class days to do, you know, obviously 90 minutes there, 45 minutes here, so it should take two class days to do the same assignment. But what blew me away, and I could not understand it for the life of me, is that what took 90 minutes at Dozier-Libby takes 45 minutes at Live Oak. And I can only hold that to class size because there's no distractions. The phone's not going off six times for kids to go to the office and two to leave early and passes and management. It was just blows me away that I can give them more in 45 minutes than I was doing, you know, three miles away. So what I wanted to say about that is that, not only that, but the grading time went down. My personal time that I volunteered each week in order to grade things went from 15 hours a week to three and a half hours a week. So my burnout was less because I wasn't giving so much of my time to grade so much. So I think class size is extremely important, and I think that that data proves it because I see it every single day, that I am doing so much more at a class at a school that supposedly has students that are struggling or maybe not as, you know...
Maya, do you know at what point we are in terms of... Because there's a 30-minute session, and then we come back to complete. So we'll do one more, So we'll do one more and then we'll come back to the remainder. So next is Ken Kent.
Good evening Superintendent Nanello and Board members. I am blown away by the passion and the real life stories of the people who've come ahead of me. I had planned on saying a few things that to me now pale in comparison, but I'm just going to step back for a moment and talk about getting our students what they need. And over the last 23 years of teaching in Antioch, I've seen a lot of episodes where things were working. Kids were figuring it out. They were having that turnaround moment, they were feeling good about themselves, their scores were getting better. And every time I come back to those experiences, every time I reflect on what was going well over the years, I come back to one thing. More adults in the room. I had a few students a few years ago, very challenging class. I had real difficulty connecting with a lot of the students. And then we had a day where the music teacher did a performance during the day at the middle school. And the students who stayed were the ones who didn't have the resources to participate in music, the ones who challenged me each and every day, the ones who I had to take a breath before I opened the door so that I could make sure I greeted them with a genuine smile. And we were supposed to do writing and fifth graders hate writing. And that was the best teaching day of my life. I had students who never wanted to be there before that day and the only thing I can pinpoint of looking back is that they had me fully. They had all my attention, they had all my interaction, they could, ideas could be heard. And when their ideas could be heard, they participated, they wanted to. Now I know everything we're asking for, we have a laundry list and we start adding it up and ticking it off and like it's going to cost bazillion dollars. And I think, well, if we can't do everything, let's do what we can. And when I look at increasing year-end balances and I ask myself that question, are we doing what we can? We know the answer to that question. When I had ELD intervention specialists that our site paid for with site funds, our groups went smoothly, the kids participated well, we were able to share and collaborate with teachers who were there for that job and the year went well. I was less burned out, my kids were happier, they were performing better. But the funds change and the consistency drops away.
So why we definitely want to make sure that we hear the voices of each and every teacher, we do have, based on the policy for our board, there is sort of a procedure that we have to follow. And there's a 30-minute block at the beginning and then we'll return to any, any comments that sort of extended past that 30-minute mark. So we have quite a few and I want to make sure that we definitely give everybody a chance to speak in order to respect that and also respect the, sort of the process that's established. We'll sort of come back to our meeting minutes. So I do definitely, I don't want to dismiss the passion that's in the room, we definitely feel that, we definitely appreciate all of you, but we do have to make sure that we are staying true to the policy and process that we have. So next up is item number seven. We have career CTE overview. I believe that's Lindsay.
I'd like to invite Director Lindsay Wisely, she will be sharing updates on our CTE programming.
Good evening Board, good evening Superintendent Nanello. I'm really excited to share information about our Career Technical Education Program in AUSD. It's really a shining star for us, a feather in our cap. We have a lot of things to be proud of. I want to start off by pointing out that LCAP Goal Three really talks about college career readiness. That's where we have a lot of metrics in place for our Career Technical Education Program. We really monitor those metrics. We have quite a few meetings throughout the year with lead teachers, industry partners, community members. We take a lot of feedback and we're constantly monitoring the progress of our programs. We're really proud that our graduation rate has come up to 84%, that our, number of our students and pathways have come up from 20% to 24%. And then a lot of these metrics, our AP pass rate, our Seal of Biliteracy, all those metrics have come up. So this is a strong goal for us in our LCAP, which we're really proud of. Moving on, I want to talk about the progress towards, towards reaching this goal. So we've put a lot of action steps in our LCAP that are centered around our Career Technical Education Program. One of the goals has been to implement a CTE program at our alternative education sites. And we're really proud to share that Bidwell and Live Oak now have a CTE pathway, Consumer Services. The County Office of Education has encouraged us to present at the Educating for Careers Conference and our presentation has been approved and our CTE team will be presenting our progress with our alternative education sites. We're one of the few districts in the county that is having a Career Technical Education Program at our alternative schools, so we're proud about that. Still a lot of work to be done in those pathways, but we have a great start, so we're proud to share that. Previously, last year, we actually closed a grant, the Strong Workforce Grant for Middle Schools. And we did a lot of work and it's actually work that has been sustained. So we are now have School Links, a College Career Planning App, and it's available for sixth through 12th graders across the district, even at our alternative ed sites. So we're really proud that parents and students can use that planning app to look at careers, to explore colleges. It's a really robust app and we're excited to be able to maintain that for our students. We also launched two years, two summers ago, a career camp. We actually learned about it at a conference and the CTE team decided to launch the career camp. And it's been very successful, it's grown. Sometimes we have over 300 students participating in the summertime. These are middle school students who get to survey our AUSD CTE programs in the district. And I'm so proud of our CTE teachers at the high school because they extend their school year and they participate and they lead classes during the summertime. It was actually a lot of fun. Students got a chance to take a class by Gretchen Medel, Emergency Medical Response. We've had Dylan Howell come in and teach the construction pathway. We've had a lot of really cool hands-on classes that our students have loved. And then we've paired that with swimming with the East Bay Regional Park. So it's been a successful summer program for our middle school students. And lots of college tours too in the summer, so that's been really good. We're really proud of our work-based learning program, the Board should be very proud of. We have two work-based learning coordinators in the district, Kendra Ebinger and Chris Sampson. They do work supporting teachers in the classroom with guest speakers, helping our students gain internships, helping teachers organize field trips, like you said, to the colleges and to see different industry partners. That is a huge feather in our cap. Not a lot of districts fund work-based learning coordinators and we do. That's been a game changer for us on top of having College Career Center techs at our high schools. So we're really proud that we've built a system in Antioch that has helped our students be successful. We're also expanding and strengthening our pathways. Pathways have been in place for Antioch for over 20 years and now we're at a point where we're really not adding additional pathways, we're really focused on strengthening the pathways we have. So a lot of times when we pursue grant money, we're pursuing grant money to strengthen pathways. For example, our construction pathway at Antioch High, we're adding a heavy construction pathway within that so that students have options for different career paths. You can see, this is a list and so we're, when the county office, and I'm going to show you a link in a second, when they look at Antioch, they always use us as an example to other districts because we have such a robust career-focused CTE program and pathways available to our students at all of our high schools. So you can see, we have biotech at Antioch High, which they pursued the CPA grant and they're going to be able to add supplies and more supports for that program. So we're really proud of that teacher for working hard on that grant. We have the residential and commercial and construction. We now are moving in the direction of the heavy construction. We have environmental resources, financial services, education, which is, it's a small program, but we're really proud that we have a pathway for teachers. It's really unique to Antioch, it's really successful. A teacher does a beautiful job and our students go out to our local elementary and middle schools and partner with teachers, kind of like student teachers, and they are learning about the teaching profession. We have software, web and social media, we have that available at Deer Valley as well. We have a very popular culinary arts program at Deer Valley High School. We use a lot of our Perkins Funds to provide our teachers supplies. So we've bought new mixers for the culinary program, new refrigerators, lots of supplies for the teacher. Chef Paul is pretty incredible, he was a chef previously, so it's really special for our students to have teachers with that kind of career background. Video productions, and I'm going to show you a video in a second from the video productions class. And that's a real, a real amazing program. Kyle Ulf does a wonderful job with video productions, it's been in place for some time now. Students love it, it's extremely popular. We have the ACE Academy, which is a academic challenge and enrichment academy. The teacher, he does quite a bit of work with LMC and there's a lot of dual enrollment programs available for our students where they can get college credit in that program. And then the Law and Justice Academy, which is expanding its pathways. And we're very proud of Dozier Libby as well, which has the patient care and the public and community health. We recently this year hired a nurse to take over their capstone course, so all the students at Dozier Libby who complete that sequence of courses will be a CTE completer. So that should raise our college and career dashboard for this coming year, which we're really proud to have Ms. Karkeek teaching that course, which is very popular as well. And then like I said, the, the work our teachers, Kathy Libby is doing at, and Mike Wade is doing at our Live Oak and Bidwell in the Consumer Services. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a second because that's really centered on entrepreneurship, financial literacy. The teachers have done a spectacular job designing that pathway. So areas of focus, oh, so areas of focus, so we are really focused on recruiting and retaining highly qualified CTE teachers, kind of like Ms. Karkeek and Chef Paul, who have the industry experience that can really share some, some pretty enriching lessons for our students that are hands-on. We are supporting our administrators with master scheduling, making sure that our counselors know how to sequence the courses. So it's very important our students take a concentrator and a capstone. If they take that two-course sequence, that leads them to further qualify as college career ready on the California dashboard. So we've done a lot of professional development around that. We've expanded professional development opportunities for project-based learning. We're constantly offering different staff development days. When the district has staff development days, the CTE team goes out, Kendra, Kevin, Chris goes out and does CTE-based professional development for the teachers. And then I can't tell you that one of the biggest feathers in our cap is the work-based learning. We have incredible work-based learning coordinators that are doing great work with our students in terms of providing those really enriching experiences of internships, pre-apprenticeship programs. So kind of the big wow factor for AUSD is we have eight CTE academies across five campuses. We have 22 pathways, three California Partnership Academies, 11 out of the 15 industry sectors are represented in AUSD. We have 31 course offerings. We also, and I presented before to the Board about our articulated and dual enrollment courses, we have 114 approved articulated courses in our district and we have 1,900 students enrolled in articulated courses right now. So we're something to be very proud of. And like I said, the county office really uses us as an example when we're, we go to our county meetings, they look at AUSD as an example. All right, I want to show you a little bit about DVTV. I ran into a student from 2008 and she has her own business and she started out in the DVTV program and she has a videography business. So Mr. Ulf makes a huge impact, super proud of the work he's doing with our students and they deliver the news every day at Deer Valley. Moving on, maybe, are you able to hit me the next one Jake? Thank you. All right, so some of the work we've been doing in our expansion is, and thank you Dr. Lewis for introducing us to the Labor International Union. We've done so much work with them and really strengthening our construction pathway and we're moving towards that heavy construction in Antioch High. We actually walked the campus last Friday to look at a training center. We no longer have an auto shop, but we're going to probably convert that auto shop into a heavy construction shop. Our students, when I arrived, were outside with Mr. Howell doing building, building sheds. They're actually building a shed for Orchard Park School right now. So there's pretty incredible work going on. We're looking forward to repurposing that space and the partnership we have with the Laborers Union has been extremely helpful as they've advised us on curriculum, lessons, they've been very helpful with our teachers. I also mentioned that we've expanded the Consumer Services pathway and one of the things we've done is we've partnered with the National Retail Federation. So they're helping, and we're still in the process of training our teachers, but there are certifications that our students can get in customer service and sales, logistics and warehouse management, retail fundamentals, business of retail. They can walk out the door as a high school graduate with all these certifications because we've, we're partnering with the National Retail Federation. I will say that our students at our alternative education schools have been very interested in entrepreneurship, so these certifications are a great start for them. It's definitely not the end. I think it's a good start to get them, you know, things on their resume, give them experience, knowledge. I think one of the best, the best feedback we've gotten from the students is about the financial literacy. I walked into Ms. Libby's classroom and she was teaching them, you know, about taxes, you know, how to fill out a job application and, you know, things that are related to real life. So the students are feeling like they're, they're getting something out of it and I can't tell you, they're glued to her. She is leading just really engaging lessons. So the business fundamentals that they're learning in that pathway has been a game changer. I also am really proud of the medical ethics capstone and having our nurse, Ms. Karkeek is teaching that class. And then at performing arts, we have added technical theater. So I will say that Billy White, the teacher there, has been working with the other teachers to expand into an arts media and entertainment pathway. They've gone to a lot of trainings and professional development, so they're strengthening right now our performing arts pathway at Deer Valley. All right, so let's hear from Cora Rose, she's going to give you a few words from the construction pathway.
Hi, I'm Cora Rose Adams and I'm a senior here at Ennis High School. I've been in the edge program for all four years and I've done the construction technology for two. This year, I am our construction manager for our shed 12 team that is happening in May. I want to be a firefighter, construction is helping me figure out the framing of houses and helping with my career.
So she wants to be a firefighter and she's figured that out in high school. I think that construction pathway, even though she's not going to go into construction, it's helped her kind of find her path. And I will say, we have several girls on the construction team, not all schools have a good representation of, of girls and we're proud that we do. And we'll say that they, they took home three out of the six awards this last spring. We won the safety award, our manager Cora Rose won an award. And in fact, our students, they, they made a joke because that day of the competition, it was junior prom. And so they were joking that they were hammering nails during the morning and then they were getting their nails done in the afternoon. So really proud of our, our construction pathway and the team there and the work that they're doing. I want to show you a little bit about, from Tristan Shaw, and this is an example of the work we're doing with our industry partners. I think this will shed a little light on some of the work we're doing.
Hi, my name is Tristan Shaw and I'm the vice president of Business Reverend Labor's Local 324, based right here in Contra Costa County. We're an affiliate of Launa, which stands for the Labor's International Union of North America. We are one of the largest trade units in North America with just over 600,000 members. We're very excited to partner with Antioch Unified School District by bringing the Launa Learn Program to Antioch High School. This is the first time this program has been introduced to the West Coast and we're very excited that it's with AUSD. Launa's Learn Program is a construction craft labor CTE. Students participate in real-life, job-related activities and industry projects. Core academic principles are integrated into every activity and project, including math, science, and English. Tradespecimen knowledge increases every year as students take part in simulated job site tasks. So far, Launa's experience with the students have been great. Launa has participated in two different CTE events in the AUSD and we're looking forward to hearing more information with the students and their parents in the near future. Launa has been working with the AUSD faculty and staff for about a year to get this learn, to get the Launa Learn Program up and running. The faculty and staff are truly dedicated to this program and to making sure that this CTE program is a success for all the students of AUSD. Launa is excited to be a part of AUSD's CTE program and can't wait to see what the future holds for the wonderful students of AUSD. Thank you.
And we have dozens of industry partnerships. This is just an example. Our work-based learning coordinators, our teacher on special assignment, Kevin Jones, myself, we all work together to establish these relationships with this different industry partners. And that really helps our students. So when you talk about work-based learning, and we've been able to bring this down to the middle school, and, and we're really excited about the career classes that are going on in our middle school and some of the opportunities. You know, we run Girl Power, we run the King's Conference where we introduce our students to different industry professionals in the community. We're really expanding the work with our work-based learning program, middle to high school. We want to come down to the elementary schools, we've kind of piloted a few times. It's definitely something on our, our list of goals for the future is really expanding district-wide and we're getting there. But this is a list and I'm not going to go through all of them, but the, the career fairs, the guest speakers, the industry tours, the job shadowing, we had groups of students who We had groups of students who worked in our different city departments this summer. Our work-based learning coordinator connected our students to those internships. We're about to hear from Kaiser and the internship, and our work-based learning coordinators coordinate that, help with resumes, interview skills, the list goes on. So the value with our work-based learning coordinators, I want you to know, is, is outstanding, and it's a great service to our students and our teachers. All right, I want to show you the range in industry partners. So the next one is from Kaiser, and I think you're going to enjoy this. Dr. Mandeep.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Mandeep Temervilla. I am a licensed clinical psychologist and manager at the Kaiser Permanente Counseling Center with the regional team. I was previously involved in the Dozier Libby Medical High School Collaboration with Kaiser Permanente, where we created a mentorship relationship for high school juniors and seniors with our mental health training programs, where our doctoral and master's level trainees got the opportunity to mentor your students. We cannot begin to express our gratitude for the program and how fulfilling it was to work with your students. We had the opportunity to watch your students get into college and express their gratitude for internships that we were able to create for them where they are paid over the summer, which is to give you just the utmost positive regard for what a great collaboration it has been. And I really hope that Dr. Sheenway Brown, who is one of our equity inclusion and diversity officers, can continue to work with your school, with Kendra Ebinger, and just enhance this program so we can continue to support your students with pathways into mental health careers. Again, I just want to share my deepest gratitude for allowing me to be a part of your programming and allowing us to work with your students. I am forever grateful for this program. Thank you.
All right, so you can see we have a range of partners. We could go on and on, and I have a QR code at the end where you're going to be able to click and hear from a lot of different people, students, partners. So we can't see them all, but this is just a little sampling. All right, so I wanted to show you one more. This is Jessica Plummer. She does our Bite of Reality. We talked about financial literacy, and she has been a partner for a long time in our district. I just want to do one more. All right, here we go, Jake. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessie Plummer. I work for Delta Schools Credit Union. Our partnership with Antioch High School started in 1953. We started in Antioch Schools Credit Union. We've grown down to Delta Schools, so we still have a very, very energizing relationship with Antioch High School to appreciate. I would say in the past 10 years, we've really honed in and focused on our programs, got the students to enjoy, and realized that they're gaining by skills. We host the Bite of Reality, which is our financial literacy fair. We've done budgeting lessons, check writing, what's credit, so many other life lessons. We're part of Power, scholarships, we have internships. Our experience with AUSD has always been a positive beneficial relationship.
And she can go on and on. You can hear a little more from her when you click on the QR code, but, you know, we connect a lot of these industry partners to our scholarship nights, so there's a lot of benefits building these partnerships with different companies in our community, because they not only support classroom lessons and internships, but a lot of other things. So we're really proud of that. I want to show you about our, our College Career Centers. So, you know, our, our work-based learning coordinators, they build the ship, and our College Career Center techs, they drive the ship. So they're, they're to execute a lot of the events on campus. They have college fairs, they host workshops for our students, FAFSA support, any information about the military, you know, information about scholarships, they, they lead our scholarship nights. They bring a lot of representatives on campus. A lot of times, our work-based learning coordinators build these relationships, and then our College Career Centers techs host these events in their, their rooms on campus. We're really excited that we will be adding Dozier Libby, and they will also have a Career Center tech, which I know Principal Karen Clark is very excited about. It's been a need at Dozier Libby. So thank you for building this infrastructure for our district with our work-based learning coordinators, our career techs, our CTE lead teachers. We really do have a robust system in Antioch. We have, we pursue a lot of grants. We work with the county on grants. Sometimes we pursue our own grants and go on our own. We're cycling through a strong workforce grant right now. That is one of the reasons why we're strengthening our construction pathway at Antioch High School. We have the CTIG grant. There is an SWP grant with the county. And then we also have Perkins Funds, and our Perkins Funds have increased significantly since we have been building our programs and strengthening our programs, and so we've been getting quite a bit more money. These funds help us provide sections in the district for various CTE classes. They also help us to provide classroom supplies, because there's special supplies that you need for these CTE classes. And I want you to know that we really do take a lot of stakeholder feedback. We have CTE lead teacher meetings. We have stakeholder engagement meetings. I recently had a community member ask me about involving parents, and I think that's one area that we want to try to get more parent involvement in our stakeholder engagement, so we're going to try to pursue that this year. But we are really proud of the industry partners that participate with us. And so there's a lot of meetings that are going to place, and our teachers do a great job getting input from our students, finding out, do they need more supplies? Do they want different supplies? Are they enjoying some of the software subscriptions we have? So they bring that feedback back to the lead teacher meeting, and that helps us spend some of these dollars. So really, in the end, we are focused on helping our students get to high-wage, high-skill, high-demand jobs. We are watching the local job market. That helps us make some of the decisions about the pathways. We're taking student feedback, trying to understand what our students want to do, and we've really built quite a few different options for our students that we can be really proud of. I want you to check out our Facebook. There's been, you can see the construction competition is on there, the Bite of Reality is on there. We also have Mad City Money from Travis Credit Union. You can see the work that's going on at Dozier Libby. We're constantly posting about the work that our students are doing, and actually, we're going to be doing a new series on Facebook highlighting the each pathway in depth, and Trini Galagos is out there interviewing teachers, getting more information, so we can share with our parent and our community a little bit more about each pathway, because I think every time people hear about these things, they're like, wow, we have a lot going on in Antioch. There's a lot to be proud of. So we're trying to get that message out there. So I encourage you, check out our Facebook, like our Facebook. There's lots of good things that our students and staff are doing. And I just wanted to point out that QR code, you can hear from more students, more industry partners, if you click on that QR code, my CTE team is available. I am so proud of the work we are doing. We're a small team. Kevin Jones is a teacher on special assignment, and Kendra Ebinger and Chris Sampson are working with me as work-based learning coordinators. I'm so proud of the work that they're doing. I'm proud of our teachers and our students, and I'm thankful to the board and our superintendent for supporting this work. This is definitely something we're proud of in Antioch, and that, thank you for letting us continue this great work with our students. Are there any questions?
Wonderful.
So first of all, I want to thank you for the presentation and sort of shedding light on a lot of the wonderful work that's going on through the district. You know, it's not always that we hear some of the detail around some of the good work. Obviously, other stuff sort of flows to the top, but it's always refreshing to hear some of the positive work that's creating the future for our kiddos. So, Trustee Hernandez, do you have anything?
Yes, definitely. You know, I think the work of CTE is so important. I, myself, being a product of CTE, having gone through Dozier Libby Medical High School and having gone and experienced through hosts of future health professionals, which is one of the career technical student organizations that underlies some of the programs that exist. And so I definitely understand the importance of things like, you know, the Perkins funding that you get, having been a student that's gone on Capitol Hill and advocated for Perkins funding, and also taken students to Capitol Hill to train them how to also advocate for Perkins funding. So I, I think the work here is absolutely great regardless of whether we have outcomes tied to it, but I'm wondering, do we have data that can tie to outcomes? Can we make the case that these types of programs are helping students find jobs that are helping them get to college, increase attendance? I think it'd be a powerful way to continue to make the case for why we need to be doing more of this work.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I think we're always looking for metrics. One of the things we do is we reach out to our graduates to find out what they're doing, how they're doing it, how they're doing in life, and we usually get a pretty small sampling back. So that's been, that's been tough to get that data. One of the things that we are going to try to build up is our School Links participation, because there is an alumni tab in that app where students, we can collect their email data, their contact data, and hopefully contact them in the future. So I think the work we're doing in School Links may pan out for us to get some, some more of that data. We're also a member of CalPass, which gives us data on the community college system and where our students end up in the community college system, and if they matriculate onto the four-year system. So we've been looking at that data. We've been sharing that data with our principals and our counselors, but I do think that, Trustee Hernandez, I think that can be built up more, so we can have more testimonials about where our students are going and how this is impacting them. I think it's still a work in progress.
And this may be touching on the same question, but like, what are the next steps for our CTE program as a whole, both in the short term and like, what does our greater long-term vision look like for the work that we're doing here?
We really want to have more CTE completers. I think we're working with our counselors. Sometimes our students leave the pathway. They might start the concentrator course, and then they don't do the capstone. So we really want to try to see our students through the two-course sequence. We really want to continue to build each program. I think some programs are further along than others. You can see DVTV is one that's well-established, that has been around for a long time, really making a big impact on students. And I think as more, the more support we can provide our teachers with supplies, professional development, I think they're doing great work out there. I think we just need to continue to provide those supports. I think our teachers really appreciate our work-based learning coordinators, because that's a heavy lift off of them. So I think one of the key things is just expanding what we, what we have in place, really strengthening those current programs, because we have so many right now.
Got it, and then I just have two more questions. You touched on this a little bit. How are we getting community, parents, teachers, and other people to be part of the development of these programs? And in particular, I'm interested in, is there opportunities for them to be decision-makers, you know, expanding beyond just giving input, but actually having a decision-making stake in that?
That's a great question, and one of the things that we learned by doing the consumer services pathway is we had students and parents design the rooms. So we brought them in. Parents and students made the decision together with our designer. We had a grant for that, so that made it nice to be able to hire someone to help design our rooms. But we found that it really energized parents and students. They're, they came more to the school. It's, it's a really a best practice, so I think we want to do more of that. We have a lot of industry partners that come to our stakeholder engagement, but I think having more parents is an area where we can improve. And so I think the advertising that we do, the way we PR it, the way we reach out to our families, that can be an area that we, we take advantage of, and I think maybe we're not there yet, but we want to be there, and I think our CTE team is looking at it.
Great, and then the last piece of digging, digging a little bit more into these partnerships, because it sounds like we have so many partnerships. Are they like on the same level, or what's the ideal partnership we're trying to get these industry partners to?
I think there's a lot of different ways our industry partners can serve, because it doesn't necessarily have to be an internship. Sometimes our industry partners can really serve our students by just coming in and being a guest speaker. Sometimes our industry partners can come and just be a part of our stakeholder engagement and provide our teachers advice on industry standards, industry practices, recommendations for lessons. That helps our staff. And then, you know, it's, it's wonderful when our industry partners can provide an internship like Kaiser. You know, we, we do appreciate that, but we'll take any support that we can get from our industry partners, and I think we've done a good job in Antioch, really reaching out to the, the local industry leaders and getting their support.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Trustee.
Sort of a follow-up question, pie in the sky, of course, but, you know, as you're talking, I think there's an opportunity, potentially, obviously, we'd have to look for grant funding or a way to structure the program, but we also have parents that potentially benefit from participating in a form of CTE. I know we have adult education and things like that, but thinking about, we have a population of people here who potentially could go into one of the trades or whatever like that.
Yeah.
How do we then incorporate that? Because again, if the goal is parent involvement, having opportunities for them to level up and sort of pursue a different career or sort of get some training and things like that could also build bridges that further solidifies the pathway for our kiddos as well.
I think that's a great idea. I do want to give you kudos. Hiring Principal Hernandez at Prospects was, was wonderful. He has a real eye on adult education and expanding those programs, and he is from Antioch High School, and so he has those connections. So I think that would be a wonderful idea to build those bridges with our comprehensive high schools, with our parents. I think definitely we can do some work in that, so thanks for sharing that.
Trustee.
Thank you for sharing. Is there, I'm thinking about Dozier Libby, like the, the way they have structured their school, it's a focus, the whole school, right, on medical. And then at the other, the comprehensive high schools, and then also the alternative schools, how they have different CTE pathways. In what ways, and I'm thinking about this, because I walked Antioch High School in Dozier, in Deer Valley recently, where they have, you know, like three classes for a pathway or something. In what ways can we leverage the integration, kind of like how Dozier Libby is doing? They're getting great results, and you can see we have a board member here, Medical School, you know, who went there. So just thinking of ways to integrate more with other teachers, so that it feels like, like a college strand, you know, whether they decide to do, you know, a trade or go to two- or four-year college. So you may or may not have the answer to that today, but that is something that I was thinking about as I was touring some of the, the classes.
I'm glad you said that, because we were really strong in that some years ago before the pandemic, those integrated lessons across different subject matter, and really working. There was a period of time where we had gone very deep in our pathways, where teachers were collaborating across grade levels, across subjects, and really working with a cohort of students and doing integrated projects. We have to keep an eye on the rigor that, you know, helping understand how to build the rigor in these projects. I think the pandemic took us back from that in terms of that collaboration, that time for teachers, so we've really talked to our principals about providing that collaboration time for teachers, because we can get back to that point where we have those integrated projects that are really rigorous across different subjects. So I think that's our dream, is to get back to that, strengthening that, and really taking the rigor to another level with our, our CTE projects and that kind of project-based learning, because we notice our students' attendance goes up, we notice that engagement goes up, and we have a really rigorous, hands-on project.
Yeah, thank you, and I think that goes back to what Trustee Hernandez said in terms of metrics or really understanding the, evaluating the effectiveness. I think part of it is the after, so when kids, when students leave, but the other part is in the moment, and you just named it, right? Grades go up, attendance go up, so those are in-the-moment kind of metrics that I think would be very beneficial to, to share over time. Two more questions. When do pathways start, or when, when do students choose a pathway?
That's a wonderful question. So we are, we selected in the eighth grade. It is a really hard time, because the kid's in eighth grade, and we, we have been trying to beef up our communication with parents, students. We do a presentation in the eighth-grade classes. The counselors come in, present the variety of pathways. We do a parent, two-parent engagement nights, and our teachers are wonderful. They come in at night. We, we do a whole presentation. We have booths where parents can ask questions. They bring students from their pathways. We have videos and a really robust website with lots, and we try to push those links out to families. I still think it's a very hard decision in the eighth grade. So one of the choices at Antioch High, Principal Jim Noe has decided to go ahead and, we put the students into their pathways, we notify the families in January, they start the pathway, but at Antioch High, they're doing a very generic schedule for ninth grade, just kind of the main classes that they need, and then they're re-going over in their college career class, the different pathways. So they're giving the students a second chance to make sure they've selected the right one. We're doing that for the first time this year, so it'll be interesting to see how that pans out, because we do get students who show up to high school and then want to switch. Sometimes they want to change high schools altogether. Sometimes they get in a pathway and say, nope, I need to switch to this pathway. It's a hard choice, kind of like with Cora Adams. She, even though she's in the construction pathway, she's now discovered what her career will be. So yeah, it, it does start in the eighth grade, but I think there's a lot of opportunity when students are ninth graders to change it up a little bit.
At least for one school.
That's at Antioch High. Well, they'll inform Deer Valley on how that changes. Not all pathways start in the ninth grade. A lot of them start, I would say, majority start in the 10th grade, so there still is that opportunity. And sometimes students take a concentrator course, just like college, right? You take a course and you realize, whoop, this isn't for me. I need to switch gears, and we luckily, we have amazing counseling staff that work with families to make those decisions. decisions to switch over. And they really do help the students at the school site make those changes should they need to.
Thank you. I appreciate that. One more question. I appreciate that response and the thoughtfulness behind moving forward. There are some schools and other districts that have like ninth grade. It's kind of like your, you know, when you're getting your bachelor's degree, so it's general studies.
General studies, yeah.
And then you choose your major. So I think that's a good idea because eighth grade is hard. I couldn't imagine.
It is really hard.
But thank you for that. And lastly, I appreciate the pathway or the CTE programs that are now at the alternative schools, so the consumer work that students will be doing or learning. And I'm hoping that in time, we can also think outside the box.
Yes.
More because there are other pathways for young people who might not be there long. As I know, I talked to the principals and their thing is some of the kids aren't there very long because they're just there for a semester or two to catch up. So I know that's difficult, but there are other lucrative pathways like coding, videography that might not be as in-depth as Antioch High School or Deer Valley, but it still gives them some information about maybe this could be a pathway that I take. And then in all of this, I'm hoping that college is still at top of mind regardless if they choose a trade or not.
Absolutely. And we're investigating an online program right now that has those quick certifications in different industry sectors. That might be an area where we pilot for our alternative ed. I look forward to coming back to you in the future to share how we're expanding it. So thank you for saying that, Dr. Jag.
Trustee Rocha.
I just want to say how exciting it is because I can see it in you and I can feel it and you talk about it, so it's in your heart. And because of that, I know it's going to do much better than it would have with your leadership. But I was interested in Mr. Hernandez's situation because the school is so small and he wants more to do with his adults. But the idea of kind of partnering with the construction and things that they can get involved is a wonderful idea because that space is over here, not over there.
Right.
The other thing I'm excited about is the opportunity of elementary because the kids are growing fast. Elementary, they start thinking already, and that's why you bring visitors in, to try to give them an idea of what's out there in the community. So the idea of how to think in a pathway at the elementary is not a bad idea so that by the time they get to the eighth grade or ninth grade, they will have a decision already in their mind.
Absolutely. I'd love to come back to you and tell you we've expanded to elementary in the future.
And the other thing is, the sad part is the transportation. There is some families that would like to go into Deer Valley, but they live in the Antioch High School's area. The cost of that transportation, when we ever get our transportation from the state pulled in, which who knows how long that'll take.
Yes.
Maybe that will help you solve that particular piece.
I would love if the state could support us with transportation because it would really help our students.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you again.
Thank you, trustee Rocha.
Thank you, Dr. Wisely.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis.
Oh, yes, Dr. Wisely.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So, thank you for that and the hard work. So board, would it be okay if we suspend the rules and allocate a 30-minute block or so for our teachers? Because I do want to respect.
I agree.
Our teachers.
Do you need a vote on that or can you just go ahead and do it?
I can go ahead and do it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Very far away. Yes, we commute.
So next is, I believe this is Conan Moats.
Good evening, superintendent Nello and board members. Thank you, superintendent, for foregoing your comments out of respect for our time as teachers. I appreciate, I wish it was done otherwise, even though I do appreciate Lindsay Wisely's comments and her dedication to our field. She did a good job at demonstrating the good work we do at Deer Valley High School.
Yeah.
And she acknowledged that we need resources, not just in CTE, across the board. So I've been at Deer Valley for 12 years and I taught CTE there myself when it was ROP transitioning into CTE. I think one of the biggest tragedies is getting rid of the auto shop program that we had there. We need programs, we need vibrant programs at our school, and we need to teach to all of our children. And I'm honored to work with colleagues that are as dedicated as my colleagues are. And we've all seen a lot from our students that demonstrate they need support. And we need to be able, in order to take care of others, we need to be able to take care of ourselves. And I have three children, and I just found out yesterday that my oldest needs braces, which doesn't get covered by dental. So I have to shell out something to the tune of four grand for that, and I don't know how I'm going to afford that. And it's not just cosmetic, it's really a needed procedure. The healthcare is a key issue. We need fully funded healthcare, and it's something that we are demanding and with good reason. The assets that exist in this district, it boggles my mind. So I hope you guys are earning interest on it because, you know, you can be getting four or five percent right now, and with tens of millions of dollars, you should be earning seven figures with the interest that you're accruing. But that's not what that money's for. That money is for our children or for our students. So I have a lot to say and I'm very tired. We got finals coming up. We're all exhausted. We've been working very hard this semester. Since coming back from COVID, our job is exponentially more difficult than it was. And so we are giving all we can, we expect in return, honest pay and good benefits. Thank you.
Next up is Carmen, I believe, Para.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carmen Para. I'm a counselor at Deer Valley High School, entering actually my 24th year in counseling, so I'm very excited to be there. Counseling is an amazing profession, and we are so very fortunate to be able to guide our students, comfort them when they are in need, push them to excel, get them involved in the programs that you are listening to by Dr. Wisely, and helping them to encourage and explore colleges, careers, and beyond. With that being said, the increased needs in the area of social-emotional skills and additional duties added due to post-pandemic credit recovery needs, we are already stretched extremely thin. In order to best address our students' needs and to better help them to plan for their future, we are asking for lower caseloads than the district proposed 500 to 1. 500 to 1. So think about that in the next couple of seconds. So when I entered this room, I noticed that this room capacity is about 50. Keep that in mind as I read this. Thinking about the 500 to 1. 500 students to schedule and align with the A through G requirements, 500 students to address mental health and SEL, 500 students to, 500 students who include the increased percentage of those with IEPs, 504s, SSTs, 500 students to promote college readiness, 500 students to coordinate with programming such as foster youth, homeless youth, English-language learners, LGBTQ+, previously incarcerated youth, newcomers, et cetera, and 500 students to get towards graduation and to maintain the district's expected graduation rates. What does 501 feel and look like? So we're in a room that says it holds 50 people. So we're going to multiply that. Take that number, multiply it by 10. Look at the people in the room. Add them all here, surround them by me. That's 500, and I am 1. We desperately need to serve our students. We want to, we want to encourage them, but we need our caseloads lowered. 500 to 1 is not acceptable.
Next is Mary McHugh. McCove?
Yes.
I apologize. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, board of trustees. My name is Mary McHugh, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Grant Elementary. And tonight I would like to speak about common ground. Common ground is where success happens. And I have good news. We already share this common ground, our students. As a community, we unite, provide our students the very best. I tell my students every day that we are the best. We are role models, and we give our best even when we don't feel like it or think it's impossible. Antioch Unified has a vision with a challenging path that will present many obstacles that can seem like an insurmountable moving target. We cannot ignore these targets. I believe the in-cost process will provide many opportunities and a strong foundation to build the very best for our students. This journey will take several years of consistency, dedicated staff, and a lot of work from your teachers and others. We cannot achieve excellence without truly investing in ourselves. Please commit to and fully invest in your teachers so that we are set for success to fully invest in our students. Thank you.
Next is Ashley O'Neill.
So I am also a school counselor. I'm a little bit different. My brain works a little differently. I'm more of a numbers and research person. So ASCA, the American School Counseling recommends a student-to-school counselor ratio of 250 to 1. Right now, the national average is 408 to 1. Grades nine to 12, the average is 204 to 243 to 1. And our district wants to do 500 and think that that's acceptable. Several studies have noted that smaller ratios support increased standardized test performance, attendance, GPA, graduation rates, and decreased disciplinary infractions. I have all of those research articles if you are ever interested in them. Further, a grant-funded meta-analysis of the student-to-school counselor ratio and outcomes found that one standard deviation from that recommended ratio is likely to result in a 6% standard deviation in the student outcomes. 6% for every standard deviation. That is bonkers. I personally have 650 students. It is not manageable. I have first graders wanting to commit suicide. And you, and the district is saying that Wellness Together is there to help. Guess what? Wellness Together is helping 10 of our students at a time at my school site. 10 with interns that I have more licensed credentials above them. And guess what they do when they open that can of worms? They hand them back to me, say, sorry, we only have 10 weeks with them. 650 students. And guess what? The district isn't even proposing that 500 cap for elementary at all. They have striked us from that. There's no protections for our students. We just heard about all of these CTE things, and it's ironic because I wrote right on here that we have had to cut our college and career week completely. All of the lessons that I used to do in the class, gone. We used to take the kids to Davis and Sonoma State, gone. All of this stuff. How do you expect our kids to dream big and want to come to school and make it to the high school when they have no dreams? It is unacceptable to think that this is okay. I will close with one quote from ASCA. Many of our students lack sufficient access to school counselors and other support staff. In fact, students of color and students from low-income families are often short-changed, receiving unequal access to school counselors or attending a school with too few of counselors. So my question to you is, does Antioch really want to be part of that statistic? Or do we want to show that we can be better? Thank you.
No last name.
Hi, sorry, I'm short. Good evening, board members. My name is Suzie Hines. I didn't put my last name. I'm at Orchard Park Elementary or Orchard Park School because it's not an elementary, it's a TK through eighth grade. I came up here to speak about full benefits. I have a seven-year-old and I have two twin one-year-olds, and I have all of them on my benefits. It's a struggle every single month to support them and still support myself, but I do it. But it would be my dream to have them fully covered by my district and still live my dream since I was five of wanting to be a teacher, so. But going on to the counseling aspect of it is very impactful as well. Again, like I said, Orchard Park is a TK through eighth grade, and we have one counselor. One. Yes, we have Wellness Together, but we have one counselor who services 800 students. And Orchard Park is not the fairy tale land. We have lots and lots of students with lots and lots of issues. So please, think about full benefits, think about treating us right, and think about our students who need help in all aspects. Thank you.
Next is Andre Timtim.
Good evening, esteemed members of the board, families, friends, coworkers. Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight. I want to start by saying I love Antioch. After being here for 10 years, this is a great place. This is a great place to be, and I love working in the district. And I have the great pleasure of working in the same city that I live in. And as an educator, I have a great opportunity of shaping the minds of the future generations, our students, by helping them to become fully functional adults in our society, hopefully. And you, esteemed members of the board, have the ability perpetuate, to perpetuate the work of the teachers like myself who want to see the students succeed. You have the potential to leave a legacy by setting a precedent for the hiring and retention of teachers from this day on and into the future. And that is to provide an attractive salary that is competitive in the market and does more than provide basic needs for our families and our educators. The current salary schedule is not very attractive to a new teacher who is looking to work here. I looked at the step one, column one, it's $58,419, which is about $14,000 less than the average annual consumer expenditure is like $72,000. With our current schedule, it would take a new teacher eight years to reach that level. But in eight years, the new annual expenditure is going to be like $92,000, which is, if you account for like a 3% increase in living costs. So it's not sustainable. To make these numbers more personal, let me share with you, our current salary increases don't meet my own family, basic family needs. We are living paycheck to paycheck with a roommate, and only with overtime is, only when overtime is available are we able to make progress towards our financial goals. I want to provide for my family with not just getting by. I want to be able to see our goals and dreams that they are, that they are attainable. With the current climate of teacher scarcity, that is what we need. A salary package that makes the education profession attractive to both new teachers and veteran teachers. A district that provides their staff with financial stability will have a staff that is more inspired to join, less stressed by making ends meet, and more motivated to stay. Let's make Antioch a place where the promise of opportunity is a promise fulfilled. This is the legacy that you, esteemed board members, have the ability to provide. Thank you for your time.
Next is Zach Williams.
All right, here we go. Hi, folks. I'm Zach Williams. I work at Deer Valley as an English teacher, and I just wanted to just talk about a lot of things my esteemed colleagues have been saying. The first thing I just want to say is, you know, money talks. And when I look at the amount of money in your reserves and the amount of money in your, right, offer, it tells me, at least, at least what I hear is, you don't care. Now, you might disagree with that, but what I hear is, you don't care about our staff and you certainly don't care about our students. About 50% of Deer Valley doesn't have computers. Did you hear what I said, right? You want to talk about careers? We don't have computers. We don't have anything to set them up for success. And money, right, use money to buy us computers in terms of, right, like salary and whatnot. Like, we need health benefits. We need to be competitive. We can leave tomorrow, we can go to Pittsburgh, we can go to the, right, like, the surrounding areas and get better benefits than what we're getting. And I love Antioch. I live in Antioch. You know, I see my kids at the gym all the time. And I want to be taken care of. And I feel like, you know, you folks have the power to take care of us. We take care of kids every single day. You know, you're offering a 500 to 1 ratio with counselors. How are they going to take care of kids like that? If you care about mental health, like, where's the love? Where's the care? Where's like, you know, you showing, you know, that your money is talking? I had a kid, you know, I didn't even want to bring this up. I had a kid who's having suicidal thoughts. I have a kid who lost their mom yesterday. They can't go to a counselor. Like, they're, they're overwhelmed. Our counselors are superheroes, but Wonder Woman couldn't deal with, right, the caseload that you're asking them to do. It, it just boggles my mind. And, you know, I want to live here. I want to, you know, start a family here, but I don't see how I can. I'm 31 years old. And I don't see, like, if I don't get treated with care, right? We talk about, we got to care for our students. Well, where's, where's that reciprocated? You know, I have a minute here, and so I'm not going to take up too much more of your time. I care about the people's time in here. You know, Lindsay Wisely, she gave a great presentation today, but it certainly made us quite tired. We do have to work tomorrow. And so it's pretty clever, I thought, but okay, we're still here, so here we go. You know, last thing I just want to say is this, at least with the Lindsay Wisely presentation, teachers make that work. You know, like, DVTV, oh, yeah, that's, that's Kyle. That's our teacher at Deer Valley. Like, without him, that doesn't happen. Without teachers, you don't get these amazing opportunities for students. We run the, you know, we run the engines here. And so if you don't take care of your engines, if you don't take care of teachers, you're not taking care of kids, help us out. And so, you know, I'll give up my time here, but I just want your money to talk and take care of us, please.
Next is Saxon Brown.
Good evening, board. There's a lot of tough acts to follow in here. It's amazing. My name is Saxon Brown. I've been blessed to be teaching in this district for 25 years now, and I've spent the majority of the years in kindergarten, and I'm now teaching my second year of TK, Transitional Kindergarten. So last year was amazing. I had 17 students, and it was just an amazing year. I fell back in love with teaching. I absolutely love my job. I love the foundations. I just love it. So it was amazing. This year, we have 24 students, and the state has suggested that it's 20 to 1, but that's all based on the amount of money that is available for the district. So of course, there wasn't enough money to have us have 20 to 1, so we have 24. And for the first month of school, it was like I was hit by a truck every single day. And my aide was amazing. She is amazing. And same thing. So it was so hard. This is the hardest year I've had in my entire career. Just think about it. We had 24 four-year-olds. And next year, we'll be going down in age by two more months, so they will be, when we start in August, they will be just turning four in June. So I will have, I will be having 24 four-year-olds, and some of them will have been three years old two months ago. And then you're having the other ones that are turning five in September. So you have this huge gap in 24 of them. It's impossible to meet all of their needs. It has been so difficult. So we're asking, please, reduce our class sizes to 20 to 1, please. And then also, I also want to talk about the AUSD. We want to have our cost-of-living allowance increased, like everyone's been talking about, so that we can attract our new teachers. We are lacking teachers. We need teachers so bad, and we need to keep our existing teachers here. And I, we, we're also asking for fully paid medical benefits for ourselves and our families, which our nearby school districts are paying for. And I am a two-time cancer survivor and, woo-hoo! And have had to step away from my classroom two times in two different, separate diagnoses. And that's hard when you're ripped apart from what makes you tick, what makes you you. So I, you know, and I just want to say that when you're out on leave like that, you have to take care of yourself, you have to take care of your family. That is your priority, but it's so hard. You have to focus on getting your health back. The last thing you should be worried about is paying your medical bills or having to choose between taking care of yourself.
Thank you. So Samantha, I believe it's Lipiski? Lipisco, apologies.
Hi, my name is, is it on? Hi, my name is Samantha Lipisco, and I've been teaching at Antioch Unified for over 20 years. I had a lot of friends here, but most of them left already. It's been a long time. All girls deserve the right to go to school at all times. What? This is America, you might be saying. Of course I can. No, that isn't always the case if you're low-income, homeless, or if your parents just can't afford feminine care products that month. Nearly 1 in 5 girls in the U.S. miss school because of their period. According to a 2023 survey, 25% of girls are unable to do schoolwork because of a lack of access to period products. I recently took an NEA poverty course, and the issue is prevalent throughout schools across America. Teachers are carrying the load. Maybe if you know where Miss Navia, the French teacher at Antioch High, has a closet full of tampons and pads, you might have a better chance. Or if you're a freshman or a sophomore and still have PE where they have products in the locker room, you still might. We have staff members who generally care, so the kids are luckier than some. Still, this isn't right. All middle and high schools in our district should have menstruation products in bathrooms and care closets. This money should not be coming out of teachers' own pockets, and it should not come from discretionary funds. It should come from designated funds for this sole purpose. Ed Code 35292.6, which was signed into law in October 2021, states that this law requires all public schools serving any grade 6 to 12 to provide free menstrual products in school bathrooms by the start of the 22-23 school year. Let's get up to date. Let's do this for the girls who will be next in line to do great things and have great careers. The kids that I have seen, like, go to Stanford and do great things, so my own kids, changing our world for the better if one thing didn't get in their way. Let's not talk about girl power one day of the year with our fabulous Girl Power event, but let's give the girls a chance at their own power by giving them the one thing that will help. I know our district will stand up for what's right by standing up for our girls together. Thank you, and please remember, every day we put our hearts and our walls on the line for our kids, literally weighted down with the snacks and supplies for our kids who might need a little extra. Please don't make us worry about our family's healthcare on top of other things we have to worry about each day from compassion fatigue. We are the ones who chose to work here. We could have abandoned this district for more affluent schools like so many of my friends have done, but we are here for the kids of Antioch because we generally love and care for them, and we couldn't stop if we tried. In a world where girls can be anything, let's finally let them AUSD.
Next is Monica Kennedy.
Hello, board members. Superintendent Anillo, my name is Monica Kennedy. You almost got it right, Dr. Lewis. I teach 4th grade now at Orchard Park, and the last time I came up here, I asked for a double-digit raise, so thank you, because we did get it. So I know you're capable of doing wonderful things, like magic. So my heart goes out to all of the teachers in their various situations. I had a situation to talk about, too, because I'm the head of the household of three adult daughters, and it's hard for them to get on their feet in this economy, so guess who's footing the bill? It's mom. But it's okay, because that's what we do. We support our kids. We support our kids as teachers. We support our kids as parents, family members, et cetera. So I had to put two of my girls on the healthcare this year for the first time because I figured it's going to be more expensive if I don't. But that was scary, because it looked like it started with a 5, like, that 500-something was going to come out of my check. My net pay is exactly $5,569. My rent is going to be $3,296. And so when people are telling you they're living paycheck to paycheck, your teachers are living paycheck to paycheck. Okay? And so it's not just me, it's a lot of us. And so we do need the COLA, and we do need the 100% benefits. So like I said, I know you guys can do magic, because it was done last time. But the unfortunate impasse that has come up, and the very public email that went out, I think, is what brought us here in droves tonight. And we will just keep coming, and keep coming, and keep coming, and voicing our, our need for what we're asking for. And so you've heard it repeatedly, so thank you for listening to me. Have a good evening.
Next is Sarah Phelan. I think it's your name, your last name, correct?
But that's okay. That's all right. It's all right. It's all right. It's unfortunately still Nichols. But anyway, okay. Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Sarah Nichols. I am a 4th grade teacher at Lone Tree Elementary. I am here to ask that you could consider the idea of increasing class size again. It will negatively affect all. I currently have 29 students in my class. I have room for a tiny little table to pull groups that holds three students and myself. I can't pull a decent-sized group because I don't have the space. I would be pulling groups all day at that rate to reach all the students. Can't do it. Increasing class size will negatively affect all. More and more students are coming to the general ed classroom with more issues that require more than the general ed teacher is trained to address. Increasing class size will negatively affect all. The class size was slowly whittled down after rising over these years. Saving money by cramming more students into the classroom won't help anyone. Increasing class size will negatively affect all. We are on the front lines with the kids. We have seen the needs increase. We know that larger class sizes are detrimental. Increasing class size will negatively affect all. We hope you hear us. Thank you for your attention.
Next is, last is Amber Dagan. Is Amber still here? Well, she did, at least. Okay. All right, so that concludes our speakers, teacher speakers. So thank you all for staying. You know, there is a process, so, you know, we had to take the little, well, we took the little sort of break, but I do want to make sure that you all know that we hear you. And so we will have conversation and move forward. So thank you all for staying and look forward to seeing you all next year. So keeping it going, item number 8, hearings, there are none. Item 9, public presentations, there are none. Next, consent items, number 10. Are there any items to be pulled?
I believe X needs to be pulled for a roll call vote.
X. Okay. So I will pull X. Do I have a motion before we pull X? Or should we pull it first?
Say that again. I don't think we heard you down here. It was a little noisy. Can you say that again?
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve items A through W as presented on the consent calendar.
Okay, so I have a motion. Sorry, can we keep it? Yeah. No, it's okay. Thank you.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve items A through W.
W, correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. All right, so item X. Do we want conversation on this one?
Perhaps take each number separately and do a vote. And I'm not trying to preclude your, your discussion.
Yep. Yes. All right, so we will go in order as they are presented. So item 10E, wait, 10XE. This student has.
Oh, no.
Nope, okay. All right. So E839. So they're in a different order here than they are on the board.
Are they?
Yeah. So we'll just go with the, that's on the, the agenda. So E841.
Roll call?
Mm-hmm. So I will entertain a motion.
Can we have just a tiny bit of, what is this one? Yes, I just, I'd love to hear, if we're going to do roll call, I want to make sure that I'm recalling my stance on these, and would love to hear Vice President Lathan's intended vote, because I know it was in agreement with her when we were going through these in session. I want to make sure I don't vote.
We can come this way.
Yes, oh, that would, that would be so helpful, yes, please.
So, 841, I will entertain a motion.
Yes, the motion is to approve the stipulated expulsion for the student in number 841.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to approve the stipulated expulsion for number E841.
I'll second.
All right, properly seconded. Can we do a roll call vote?
Yes. Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
Vice President Lathan?
Yes.
President Lewis?
Yes. All right, next is the last one on the sheet that we have here. It's item E842. And we can continue to come this way, so, yeah. All right, so.
We need a motion.
Yeah, I was, yeah. So can I have a motion on the floor for item 8? E42, E842.
Mine is actually a motion to not approve the expulsion for, the stipulated expulsion for student 842.
And I will second that motion.
Okay. So I have a motion on the floor to not move forward with expulsion for item E842. Can we start with Trustee Rocha?
Sure.
That would be a no. Correct, I mean, if it's yes, it would be.
They would be expelled.
Expelled, and no.
They would not be expelled.
They would not be expelled.
Okay, then it would be a yes.
Wait, no, the, the motion is to not approve the expulsion, so a yes would be.
It's the way it's put together, the motion.
Would you like to approve or disapprove?
Disapprove.
The motion. Okay, so no.
Thank you.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice President Lathan?
I just want to make sure I understand the answer. No to the expulsion.
President Lewis?
Yes, on the motion.
Yes.
All right, next is recommendation for suspended enforcement 839, which is the first one on the sheet that we have. I'll entertain a motion.
I will motion to not move forward with expulsion for student E3, E839.
And I will second.
All right, so I have a motion and properly seconded to not move forward with the expulsion of item E839. Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
Vice President Lathan?
Yes.
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 President Lewis?
Yes. And I believe the last one is item E840. So I will entertain a motion for this one.
I'll motion to approve the expulsion.
I have a motion on the floor to approve the expulsion of item E840.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, properly seconded. All, roll call vote.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
Vice President Lathan?
Yes.
President Lewis?
Yes. All right, so the motions have been addressed, because there were several, so. All right, next up.
That was rough.
Yeah. Action items. So the first is election of president of the Board of Education. I would like to take this opportunity to nominate Trustee Hernandez.
And I would second that.
Okay. So I have a motion on the floor to nominate Trustee Hernandez for Board President. Properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries.
Would it be okay to make?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion on the second one, on the VP. I'd like to put my name in motion.
Okay.
For the VP position.
Okay. Yeah, is there, if I make some comments on item A before we move on to? Yeah, is there, if I make some comments on item A before we move on to B? Because I think it's important to speak on some of the things that drive me and drive the work that I do on the school board. And I know that many people in the audience have left, but I do resonate so much with the stories that are told there about our students, because I was one of those students. I came from a low-income immigrant family. I had to learn English. My dad worked as a dishwasher and my mom as a fry cook, at Jack-in-the-Box. And I've seen the way that teachers create opportunity and the way that that can transform students' lives and the importance of making sure that we honor those teachers. And I think about a teacher I had in 1st grade, Ms. Margison, who was just, saw the potential in me that I didn't even see in myself. Growing up, my family struggled to adjust to life in the United States, and one of the things that I thought I could do as a, you know, young 6-year-old is try to keep the peace and be a good, polite child. And I was very quiet and I made sure to not cause disturbances. I made sure to keep to myself, and often that meant not speaking up. And I don't know what compelled Ms. Margison to call on me in 5th grade, 4 years after she had me. I was in the cafeteria with my best friend at the time, Doris, who was very outspoken. He had so much energy. He was a true extrovert, who, just a natural leader, a really great person. And Ms. Margison was looking for someone to speak at the talent show, to be the emcee for the event. And when she was looking for people, Doris immediately stand up and Ms. Margison goes, "How about you?" And I'm like, "Oh, yeah, Doris would be so good for that." And she's like, "No, no, no, no. You." And I was so caught off guard and surprised that she would ask me to do this when, you know, all of my life as a child, I'd been so quiet, made sure to be polite, made sure to not jump into these things. And it was such a transformative experience to see what opportunity could do to change lives, because that's really what I think about as my first time that I spoke in public, as the first time that I started to develop those skills, as the time that I saw how opportunity could change lives. And from that moment on, I grabbed and went for every single opportunity I could do it, you know, throughout middle school, throughout high school. And that's what got me to a place like Stanford where I did my undergrad in economics. So, I know how much teachers can make a difference in the lives of students and why we need to find a way to support our students and support our teachers. And I love ANIAC. I love this community. I love our teachers and I love our students. And I'm dedicated to this work and the tough work that it is. And I continue to grab those opportunities wherever I can for our students. It's why I'm not only a current medical student, but also a double master's student at Stanford studying education and public policy, because I want to be a better board meeting. It's why I've pursued things like the Masters in Governance through CSBA. It's why I'm a Water Policy Fellow, because all of these things can come together and create opportunities for our students, can help find ways to empower our teachers. And I strive to give our students these experiences. I want to get students to places like Stanford. And if I can't get all of our students to a place like Stanford, I'm going to bring Stanford to us, because I spend nearly 4 hours commuting back and forth to Stanford because I love this community. I choose to stay here. I understand the struggles that teachers talk about of having to make it, of having to live paycheck by paycheck. I sit here right now with a negative balance in my bank account because I love this community. I spend the resources that I have to make this happen. I'm not just up here sitting and talking about what it takes, but I'm doing and working and striving every moment of every day to make sure that we're honoring our students and our teachers. And I think we have such an ability to be transformative, to meet the needs of students and teachers, to be a transformative school district. And I usually do this at the end where I talk about a book, but I think I'll do it now. The book I chose today is not a children's book. It's a book I think that's rooted into my experience in the schools. It's a book by Mill Nye. It's called Everything All at Once. And I think it touches on exactly what I've been advocating all the time, that we don't always have to choose and limit ourselves to the options that are available, but can we do all of these things all at once? It's why I see the connection so deeply between what I do in medical school, what I do in these policy programs, the work that teachers do, the experiences that our students have. I think we can take all of those things all at once, hold all of these things true without having to feel like we have to trade off. And I think that together as a board, we can really make this happen. We can really continue to push education for our students here in ANIAC, because I've lived that experience. And our students deserve the absolute best, and I know that together, we can really give that to them.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Hernandez.
Mr. Mayor, I made the.
Mr. Mayor.
I put you mayor.
No, 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 no.
Okay, I put my name and nomination for Vice President.
Okay.
I need a second.
So, I have a motion on the floor, I'll second.
Now we can.
The Vice President. So, we can take roll call vote? Yeah?
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
Vice President Lathan?
Yes.
President Lewis?
Yes. Okay, so the motion carries. Congratulations to the both of you.
I just want to say, I can, I know what that teacher saw in you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to both.
All right. So, next is the election of Board Member Liaison, the Contra Costa County School Boards Association. And I believe, Trustee Rocha, you've been.
I've been going, but it's been to Antonio, Trustee Hernandez and myself that have been going to this meetings. It's open, I imagine, because if somebody else wants to be involved.
This semester, I don't have time. Trustee Lathan?
If not, I can continue. I mean.
We will nominate you, Trustee Rocha, to continue. I will nominate you.
I do it anyway.
I make a motion on the floor to have Trustee Rocha continue her position as Board Member Liaison to the Contra Costa County School Boards Association.
Great, I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor, properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. I am going to ask for a quick 3-minute bio break. We have had a long meeting and I do want to, yes. So, a quick bio break will reconvene at 9:11. 9:12, just to make it 4 minutes.
We are right on time.
Interim report.
Nine twelve. So next up, we have item 11D, the first interim report. I believe that's Liz, that's you.
If you open up the item, it'll be an attachment.
Okay. What number?
We are on 11D.
Well, but the people online.
Oh, online. Okay, okay. All right. So, good evening. Here is the 2324 first interim budget. Just to remind you that the first interim budget is, oh, am I ca- The first interim budget is to give the community, the board, the state, and the county office an update to the current budget. So what you'll see in this presentation is what we did at budget time and where we are today, because a reminder that the budget is not a static document, and we continually to make changes. The information for the first interim is, goes from July 1st, the first day of the fiscal year, to October 31st. Not working. Okay, so again, the purpose of the interim is to review the adopted budget in accordance with the state adopted criterion standards, which is in the board packet, and that's the document that you're actually approving this evening. This is part of the budget cycle for every fiscal year. In June, we adopt the budget. We do a December report for the first interim, which ends in October. I'll be back here in March to give you an update through the end of January, which is be considered the second interim, and then we start with the estimated actuals, and then we end the year. The budget, the governor's budget cycle will be starting, will be going to Sacramento in January to get the proposed budget from the governor. Then we do again in May. He gives us an update, and then we adopt a budget in June. I'm going to go into the general fund, which is our largest pot of money for a school district, and we'll talk about the assumptions. So this is the LCFF, Local Control Funding Formula, and the assumptions that go into the Local Control Funding Formula is ADA and COLA. So in the first column, you can see what the budget numbers were for projected enrollment, and we have updated the projected enrollment to 15,000. We actually just got our preliminary CalPads numbers, and we're at about 15,039. So we are a little bit higher than what I used in this projection. But for this year, it doesn't really impact our funded ADA, because our funded ADA will potentially be higher by using the prior year, because of the governor giving us the, with the COVID, they're giving us a three-year prior year average. And that number I used here, because I'm assuming that if our attendance is about 90% of the enrollment, our three-year prior average will be higher. So those, that number did not change based on what we used at budget time. So the only change to the LCFF from budget till now is the unduplicated count. Our unduplicated percentage went up about 2%, and so that increased some of our revenue. Oh, this is really small on this slide, sorry. Can you make that bigger? Yeah, there you go. So in this slide, we'll go through the revenue and the expenditure sources, and explain the differences of what changed between the revised budget and the first interim. So overall, you can see that our revenue increased about 23.6 million. Most of that is from increases to one-time revenue that when the state adopted the state budget, they proposed as part of the budget to take away our learning recovery and our arts and music block grant. When we went back, and the state's giving us a better calculation on how much that money is, it's actually more than what we actually budgeted. But keep in mind, because of the state, the state is looking at decreases to the next year budget, those could, that could be the money that he takes back again. So we did increase it based on what the state is telling us, but we have not spent it, because that money is budgeted out for the next couple of years for positions, and we'll go over that. We have a slide just on the one-time money. So the, so it was a budgeted amount. We've increased it based on what the state's telling us, and now there's preliminary other information about the state perhaps taking that back. So our increases to our revenue was a slight increase to the unduplicated count, which is about 783,000. Our federal revenue went up slightly due to Title I, our comprehensive school improvement money, and some of our deferred ESER money. But the large portion of the increases is due to the state revenue, which I just spoke about, the learning recovery and the art and music block grant. We did get a little bit of additional home-to-school transportation money that we put in the budget of about 865,000. And we have some local money that we're getting, which is still restricted. But we have a school behavioral health grant that we got of $2.1 million, and that is funding our Wellness Together program over the next couple of years. But we did get that money. And then we have school violence prevention grants. It's called the COPS grant and the STOP grant, which will be, is funded for security cameras and fencing and some professional development. So about six, about 1.6 million of that is also included as a new line item here in the revenue. Moving on to the expenditures, the differences in the expenditures. We have a slight decrease in salaries and expenditures, and that's basically based on savings from vacant positions. So each month, if we don't fill a position, we have savings, but we still continue to budget it for the rest of the school year. So we have some savings that we built into this, to this production. We had some increases to our HVAC cal shape grant that we got. And then, again, we also, the revenue that I just spoke about for the Wellness Together, we got some revenue, and then also we're paying the Wellness Together program, so we budgeted those expenditures as well. We did increase our capital outlay by about 3 million, and that has to do with the security cameras that we're doing district-wide, some technology upgrades that we're doing. We purchased a 2019 Ford Transit van to help transport some of our athletes. And we're also purchasing HVAC. So we're, we have quite a bit of HVAC, either replacement or repairs. And last year, we spent about almost 4 million in replacement and repairs for HVAC. And this year, we are continuing to budget money to do some replacements, like SSB has no air conditioner, hence why we're a little bit hot in here tonight. That is about 275 million to replace that. We ordered it.
Thousand.
Oh, sorry. Did I say million? Yeah, thousand, sorry. Whoa. 275,000.
Golden.
We ordered it, we ordered it back in October, and it's due to be here in March. So those are some of the things we're also dealing with. So overall, you can see that our expenditures increased by about 8.4. So our net increase to our ending fund balance is about 15.2 million. And a lot of that is the revenue that we're getting for one time that we're going to spend next year. And we'll go over that in just a minute. So this is just the notes that I, what I just talked about. So that's just for information for later, if you want to go back and read it. This explains all the changes to all the revenue sources, and then all the expenses. So that's what we just talked about. So this is the components of the ending fund balance. So our ending fund balance is expected to be about 78 million or so. That's just an estimate at this time. Of the 78 million, this is how, what we call the components of the ending fund balance. So what is that balance made of? 46 million here is restricted, and these are the, these are the programs that it's restricted for. So I just talked about the learning recovery and the arts and music block grant. We increased this. This 20 million was 16 million at original budget. It's now 20 million. So, and we'll, I'll show you a slide in a minute that shows you how that money is going to be spent, not this year, but the next two years. So that's going to stay in our ending fund balance, and we have it planned. We have planned expenditures associated with that money. We have our 3% economic uncertainty. This district used to have a 5%. We no longer have 5%, we have a 3% now, which is, that's a state requirement. These are other assignments. So these are unrestricted assignments for specific purposes. So we are getting funding for E-Rate, and E-Rate is a program that the state gives based on your unduplicated count numbers. So we're getting about $3 million, but we have to match some of it, and so I set aside about $1 million. It's going to probably be about 600 this year and 600 next year. So in order for us to get the $3 million, we have to put some money, and that's to improve our technology infrastructure. We have security improvements that we've committed to for fencing and security cameras. So we have 5 point million set aside to do the matching for the COPS and the STOP grant. We talked about the HC, HVAC improvements. So we have 2 million set aside to do planned HVAC repairs and replacements. And then we also, as part of our negotiated settlement for last year, we committed to paying dental and vision for all employees. And so that money is set aside, this 2 million, that will be spent next year on the dental and vision. So for this year, it's included in the budget already as a line item expenditure, and then we're, we're setting this aside so that we can afford it for next year. And then this here, assigned for potential employee negotiated settlement. We have about 16 million set aside that will come off the ending fund balance to pay for negotiated settlements. That's how much we set aside now. That number could change based on what we finally settle for, but that is the amount that is set aside. So of the 78 million, 22 of it is assigned. So when you look down at the bottom, and you say an unassigned, unappropriated, that's really what's left that hasn't been accounted for. So when you look at the percentages of what the ending fund balance is made of, 59% is restricted, and this is exactly where the dollars are at. 12% of this number here is required by the state. It's economic uncertainty. 28% is assigned, and most of that is committed in one way or another. So this 521 is 0.6% of what's available. These slides go, yeah, go on, the next one? Yeah, okay. So this is the Prop 90, this is the Prop 98 Arts and Music Block Grant. So we have two arts and music block grants that's, that we're getting. Prop 98 is theoretically ongoing, and at this time, 80% of it is supposed to be spent on salaries for employees or people, and 20% of it is, can be done for supplies. We have that in the budget at 2.5 million, and it, each site has a specific allocation based on the formula. It's restricted, and we will be coming to you with a plan. We just got the information from the state, and we just received information on how we record it in our books. So we can't supplant, we have to supplement our arts and music program. So that's one, one, that's one funding source that's coming.
Clarify supplant versus.
Yeah, well, so we can't, so if we're already paying for a music teacher, we can't shift that music teacher to this. It's got to be new, new program, new services. The Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant, so over, over here in the right corner, you can see this was our existing budget. So based on what the governor did in June for this year's budget, he told us we were going to, originally, we were going to have about 20 million. He backed us up to 16 or something less than that, and now we're, we increased it to 4.2. So at this time, our budget for this one-time block grant is 20.5 million. So I've increased our budget, which increased the ending fund balance, because this is not being budgeted to spend. So it doesn't mean we receive the cash, so we don't have cash in the bank. It's a budget dollar that the state says, this is how much we're going to fund you on this program, and we have three years to spend it. And this is how, so, and the, the district had made a decision, we've been using ESER funds, which are drying up, and this is the last year that we have to spend the ESER funds. We have until September of '25 to spend the last month of our, bit of our ESER funds. And we're shifting what we have from ESER funds into the Learning Recovery Block Grant to continue these programs. So these are the programs and positions that are being charged to ESER that will in '23, '24, and '24, '25 be spent in here. Actually, that should be '24, '25, and '25, '26. So, but these are the positions that is going to be charged to these. So we will have money in the ending fund balance at the end of the year, and then we'll budget these expenditures for the next two years. This is the Art and Music Instructional Materials Discretionary Block Grant. That's one time in nature. Again, our existing budget, because in order for, when the, he, when we adopted the budget, we had 4.5 million. We got information from the state that we're going to get the additional 4.2, so now we have 8.7. But this, I'm guessing, is where he may pull back money. This one and the Learning Recovery Block Grant, because he already attempted to do that once. So we'll continue to follow it, and, but we have not spent this yet. And, and we do have instructional materials. So I've been working with curriculum and instruction to get a multi-year on when we have to do textbook adoptions, which this money would cover also as instructional materials for new textbooks and new curriculum for, for the schools. Again, you know, given the significance of the one-time funding, and the districts will need to ensure an exit strategy, so that means we have to continue to look at the multi-year, and when those funds expire, how are we going to cover the costs that are being charged there? And do we want to shift, and we have to make adjustments, if we can't shift these expenditures into the general fund? Okay, so that's for current year. I'm going to go into the multi-year unless you have any questions. This is the multi-year enrollment and ADA and funded ADA. So we talked about the enrollment for the current year. We are now at 15,000. This is where we were at budget, and now we're at 15,000. And then you could see the amounts that we adjusted up, so we increased our enrollment based on the increase, the, our decline was not as large that it has been, and so we took an average, and so we increased it in the future years. And then we increased our ADA, our funded ADA, because you can see if we take this number at 90, at 90%, our ADA could be lower, but if we base it on a prior year, the funded ADA is higher, which helps our revenue increase. So these are just estimates, and we continue to monitor this. These are the other assumptions that go into calculating the LCFF and, and the revenue for the general fund. We just talked about the ADA, the enrollment. We also look at the unduplicated percentage. So the unduplicated count and the unduplicated percentage, it's based on a three-year average in the, in the calculator, and so our, our numbers are, have increased last year and this year, so our three-year average is higher than what we originally thought. And then our expenditures, we use CalSTRS that, as you know, has increased over the last several years. We're, thankfully, right now, the amount is staying the same, so we're not adding additional expenditures for CalSTRS. CAL-PERS is continuing to increase, so we have to do an increase to the budget based on the CAL-PERS increases, and then we do step and longevity percentages. So when we look at the current year, and then we do our LCF calculation, and we apply all the assumptions, this is what the multi-year projection looks like. So you can see our expenditure, our revenue is going down. That's primarily the one-time money. We are budgeting a slight increase. So I will caution you that these numbers for the '24, '25 is still based on the 3.9% COLA. So I always go off School Services DART board. That's kind of a document that is preserved, and so we can always reference it to see what the, what the assumptions were used for preparing and projecting the multi-year. So the governor has not officially changed the COLA in the out-years, which we're hearing that it could go down to 1%. So I'm guessing, at second interim, these numbers are going to change dramatically based on what the state gives us in January.
They're going to change down.
They're going to change down. So if our ADA doesn't increase and our COLA goes down, we're going to kind of get hit twice, so it's going to be, it's going to be a decrease. So once we decrease revenue, we'll have to revisit our expenditures and make adjustments accordingly. And then when we look at what our projected ending fund balance is, these will also adjust up or down, depending on if we're increasing our budget and our revenue and our decreasing our expenditures. But you, I'm pretty confident these numbers will go down. The estimates will go down. This is, again, the components of the ending fund balance for the multi-year. So we just talked about the 23, whoops, the 23, yeah, if you can make that a little bit bigger. The 2324, you can see the impact for the settlements, because we're showing it, the ending fund balance, it compounds. So the ending fund balance for '24, '25 is estimated to be about 66 million. You can see this, these columns right here, this is estimate to be the restricted piece. You can see the learning recovery. So from this year to this year, we spent 10 million. We'll have 10 million left. And then this, it goes to zero, because theoretically, we spent it. We put it in our budget. So here's our unrestricted assigned pieces that go to pretty much zero. I put some HVAC in there, assuming that we'll need to, if we don't pass a bond, right, this can change. If we pass a bond, the 2 million for the HVAC could be shifted to the bond, and we wouldn't spend it out of the general fund. But you can see the unassigned, unappropriated ending fund balances are here. These are our ongoing challenges now, and as I think the foreseeable future. We have COLA instabilities, inflation, staffing challenges, expiring one-time funds, our facilities need improvements. You know, we have COVID, mental health issues that we're trying to address with staffing and other programs, and declining enrollment. Okay, so for the first interim, we are a positive certification. If you can make that a little bit smaller. Yeah, there you go. So these are the different certifications a district could have. You're, they're positive, qualified, or negative. Of course, we never want to be negative or qualified, really, but we are positive. That means we're able to meet our financial obligation for the current year and the multi-year. Yes, we're positive. So moving on to just sort of the summary. With the assumptions used today for this projection, we will be able to meet our state required reserves and our fiscal solvency. We are spending down the large one-time money. We have a planned spending, we have a, a spending plan that we're using for the one-time money, and it will affect the multi-year ending fund balance, but as you can see from my components of ending fund balance, we do have a plan for it. We continue to monitor enrollment and attendance, because that helps with our revenue. Our LCFF COLA was 8.22 from the state. The state funded the LCFF at an 8.22% COLA. But because our ADA declined, our local COLA was only 5.44%. This is 5.4, or it's actually went up to 5.44 with our unduplicated count percent. So even though the state is giving us an 8.22, locally, the cash that we're getting is really only 5.44 COLA. And sometimes that's a hard concept for people to understand, but the amount of dollars that we're getting, new money, is really only 5.44%. It's not 8.22.
So Liz?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Can you give us an example why that, you know, why that delta?
Yes, because when you, would you have a lower ADA, so we're, so in order to get a flat amount, you would have the same ADA and the COLA, and the COLA would increase. But because we have a COLA, but we have a lower ADA from prior year, that the difference between the dollars that we're getting, the increase is only 5.44%. Does that make sense?
And the ADA is.
Average daily attendance, so how.
Both of those are public consumption.
Yeah, how often our kids come to school. That, that is one of the, the three main things that get us funding is the COLA, the unduplicated count percentage, and the average daily attendance on how often the kids come to school. That's how the LCFF is funded. So we, we included certificating classified staffing expenditures, and we're using one-time funds for many positions. We have increased supply purchases based on the one-time money as well. We're trying to purchase computers to sustain the amount of computers that we have. In order to do it, we need to replenish the, some of the computers, because they're at their lifespan. We are spending down the ending fund balance with salary increases, HVAC replacements, and computer purchases. Our negotiated settlements are not part of our expenditures. They are not included in the expenditure line items. They're included in the ending, components of the ending fund balance. So we're setting aside the money from the ending fund balance, but that will be deducted from the ending fund balance. We included the PERS in the multi-year for those increases. And we are continuing to share information with staff and the community, how the bond measure could really help improve our aging facilities, and perhaps shift some of the expenditures from the general fund over to the bond. Sorry. This is where we're at in our deliverables. We're at our first interim. And that is it.
Do you want to?
A tickle.
Do you want to take a quick?
Do we have a mint in the house?
Yeah.
I have a cough drop.
Okay.
Keep going.
So we will start with trustee Hernandez.
Is there any barriers that are stopping us from spending money of these, these reserves? Or, or do we, as you said, have like a plan for all of it, or is there anything that we'd like to try to accelerate?
Well, I think, you know, we did have a large ending fund balance, and you can't spend it in two days, because it's a large amount, and like the HVAC replacement for SSB takes nine months to get, right? So what happens is we plan that expenditure, we encumber it, but it may not even get expensed until July, depending on the implementation. So we do have planned expenditures with the ending fund balance, and we're trying to move as fast as we can with all the projects that we have. But I think it's just a matter of people, time, and the time that it takes to get projects done.
Got it. What do we, when we say that the government may pull back some money, what does that mean, like functionally? Like, for example, if we're already spending money, would that, is there a situation in which potentially these programs are now left unfunded?
Yes. Yes. So in the past, what they've done is they'll reduce our allocation. So we have $20 million sitting in learning recovery as a budget. They're just going to say, okay, we're pulling back $4 million, and then they won't fund us that $4 million because they don't fund us all upfront. We don't have all the cash sitting in the bank. They fund us at certain times. In fact, at the end of the year, when we close the books, oftentimes, we don't have the cash, and so we have to do an entry for deferred revenues, is what we call it, so that we can recognize the revenue from an audit perspective. But the actual cash doesn't come until the following year. And then oftentimes, what they did to help the budget when we had the crisis in like '08, '09 is they deferred our taxes, our state aid, which is part of our LCFF.
Got it. And then on Slide 23, we had a series of ongoing challenges listed there. Are there any there that you think should be our priority?
All of them, yeah. So I think the...obviously, some of them are not in our control, right? We don't...our COLA, we're not in control. Inflation, we have no control. Staffing challenges, we're working really hard at trying to like get it to 100% staffing, so that's something that we're working on. I think our facilities, improving our facilities. I know, you know, we've had several teachers come throughout, you know, the year that I've been here, talking about their HVAC not working. MNO has been trying to like fix it, fix it, fix it. One situation, we had one site, we ended up having to replace eight of them just before...I think it was right after the summertime, we replaced eight HVACs because one particular one kept failing. We couldn't get it fixed, and eight other of them are similar to it. So I think maybe helping the bond could help with that piece, definitely, if we can help with our facilities. Because if we can get energy improvement things as well, that can also help our general fund.
Got it. And then when it comes to COLA, ADA, and unduplicated count, are there levels that we're thinking about or having in mind that may take us out of a positive certification?
Well, what happens when it's not necessarily those three components? What happens when those components change that reduces our revenue, I'm assuming? We have to make adjustments to the expenditure side, so that's the revenue. So we'll look at what...how much do we think we're getting? And then what is our expenditures? What do we have to spend? What are we spending no matter what? And what can we make changes to? So we have to really adjust on the expenditure side. We can't really change the revenue side, except if getting kids to school. If we get kids to school and we get our ADA up, then we can...that could help improve.
Got it. Yeah, I guess I was just wondering, like, you know, as we think about the revenues that we're cutting in, yeah, I recognize that we have to cut down potentially expenditures to reflect that. But at what point...I mean, cuts are always hard, but at what point does that now become a challenge that requires, you know, a level higher of discussion than just like, oh, let's cut some programs here and there, but starts making...you know, starts impacting our staffing and other things to a serious level that actually starts to affect people's lives significantly?
So my guess is that we will probably be having some serious conversations in the next six months, based on what I'm hearing that's coming from the state. So like I said, this budget's built on almost a 4% COLA for next year. It's looking like it could be...it could go down to 1. That's a $6 million shift. No changes to ADA and no changes to unduplicated account. That's a $6 million shift in one year, and it compounds for the following year. So if we're adjusting our budget...let's see, right there. If we're adjusting our revenue, then we're going to be adjusting these numbers. If you see right here, this number's going to be more negative, and this number down here is going to go lower. So our ending fund balance is going to be adjusted, and so we could be having serious conversations soon.
Got it. Is there anything that we should be doing now to prepare for those conversations, whether it be ways to prevent those types of cuts or ways to make sure that we're being as transparent as possible so that we're not leaving people feeling surprised when it comes to potentially having to make those decisions?
Yeah, we definitely should be transparent. And once when we go to Sacramento in January, we can come back with an update, and we'll just have to do continued updates. We only have as much information as we have, but I think it's important to give updates.
Got it. And then the last question, more vision, brainstorming kind of thinking. Do we have any capacity to start working on maybe like some plain language versions of these things? I've seen other districts do things that explain line items rather than the accounting nomenclature that we use, but rather with like some plain language things that make it easier for people to understand and be more transparent, like you said, so that we're able to have these discussions and not be feel like...you know, because budgets are hard. And I think, you know, one thing that happens often, whether we admit it or not, is we want to seem like we're smart and we know the budget up here, but there's a lot to learn, and it's not always so simple. And so the easier we can make that for us, for the public, for everybody, I think the better conversations and communication we can have.
I would love to see if you have some samples. I'd love to, and I can definitely work on some. Maybe we can work...
Yeah, I definitely have some samples, so I can...
Yeah, that'd be great.
Trustee Lee. Let go. Trustee Rocha.
Coming back from conference, that's all they talked about was that forget about what we think we were going to get. We're not, and they're going to take away. So I don't see a positive in January. I see the truth is going to be there, and we're not going to be where we think we are. And everybody's in the same boat right now.
There's just an update this afternoon.
I have to wait until January.
The state put a spending freeze on all their spending immediately. That means sometimes it's deferrals to us. I haven't heard if that's the case, but that's usually what that means.
Yeah, so, you know, first of all, thank you and the team for putting this together. But, you know, some of these things are out of our hands, like California is facing projected a deficit, a major deficit.
A major deficit, yeah.
So it should be an interesting time, interesting time. So, you know, hopefully, we can remain fiscally solvent. That's, you know, primarily Trustee Hernandez's point, because we don't want to have those difficult conversations that could potentially happen, you know, as a result. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. Next up, we have the initial proposal from California School Employees Association, 2023-24 to AUSD.
It's an action item.
So we do need accept the budget. My apologies.
Thank you. Yes. I mean, 11 says action items. That...
Yes. And I nodded right at you. Okay.
It's been a short day, you know? All right, so I'll entertain a motion for the 2023-24 First Interim Report.
I'll move to approve item 11D, 2023-24 First Interim Report.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to approve item 11D. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Next is the initial proposal from California School Employees Association for 2023-24 to AUSD.
Yes, good evening. I don't believe any of our CSCA's folks are here tonight, but this is part of the process for negotiations. Again, the district has already sunshine with CSBA. We have initiated the process of negotiations. This is simply their formality of indicating the same things that we've already indicated that we were talking about, which included pay and allowance, health and welfare, and Article VII hours and overtime. So this is part of the process. Your opportunity to accept their proposal so we can continue in negotiations would be appropriate.
Okay, so do I have a motion on the floor?
Move approval.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion on the floor properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Next is 2023-24 School Plans for Student Achievement, SPSA.
Yes, so these school plans for student achievement are coming back to the board, and they are reflecting the carryover that the schools received and the adjustments that they need to make to their plans.
Okay.
And so we ask that you approve those.
All right. Any discussion from the board? No? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
All motion to approve item 11F, 2023-24 School Plans for Student Achievement.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion on the floor properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. All right, so next up, item 12, Items for Information Discussion Action by Board, CSBA. The first is CSBA Delegate Assembly nomination, and this is Trustee Rocha.
I would like your support in this, and I'll put that in nomination, my name, for the delegate assembly.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think Trustee Rocha's done a lot of great work with CSBA, and I'd love to see it continue. So I'll make the motion to nominate Trustee Rocha to the California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly.
I will second that. So I have a motion on the floor properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. All right, next, item 12B, Committee Formation Equity and Excellence Audit Committee. I believe this is you, Dr. Jack.
Yep. So we have...our schools are getting their equity and excellence audits. Some are complete, and they are...and then we have other schools that are waiting to get their audits done. And in an effort to ensure that the board understands the audit results as well as the executive level staff of the district, my proposal is to have an Equity and Excellence Audit Committee. And this committee would work with, hopefully, INCUS. That's another conversation, to deconstruct the audits, learn and share overall patterns and trends across the schools with the board, the findings and recommendations. And the bigger picture is to really, once we have this information from the audits and really deconstruct them in a formal process, then it will help us in the development of further board policies or updating board policies, adoption of curriculum and instruction materials, and establishing our budget priorities. So my...that is a conversation that I wanted to have with the board and then, at some point, take action tonight on what we want to do.
Okay, so I'll open the floor for comments.
Mr. Chair, I think that it's...what you're saying is very applicable, and I think you're right when we need to have the information. But shouldn't it first come from the teachers as to how they have...what they've come upon, and then we would go from there? I mean, I'm just asking you, Superintendent.
I think it's a great idea for the board to have a deep understanding, and if that means that maybe the formation of a committee of two that work with perhaps me, a site principal, a teacher, so that we...so that they can come back to the rest of the board to give a deeper understanding so that the board can make decisions. I think what we would need tonight, if you do want to go with INCUS doing that work, since they can help us deconstruct it, is...and I don't want to speak for Dr. Lathan, Vice President, so jump in, but perhaps authorizing staff to get a quote on that work, how long that would take, and how...what the quote...and then come back to the next meeting and talk about that.
Yeah, I think...thank you for sharing that. And Trustee Rocha, I agree that the school sites need to do that as well. That's a separate process for them to make a decision with their staff about how they're going to, you know, use the information and follow the recommendations, and which ones that is a site decision and one that they make with Associate Superintendent DiBara. This is for our level, since we have to make policies around things, budget decisions. I think it'll help us better understand. So my proposal is to create an Equity and Excellence Audit Committee with at least two board members on it, working with the superintendent, and I think working with Superintendent Anello to figure out which one of...or which group of her executive staff members she wants to participate, and then other folks that she wants to participate.
Isn't that the same? What's the difference?
I think it's nuanced in some ways. I think they'll have the deconstructing at the site, and I'm paraphrasing, so I don't want to speak for you. But then if the board...if board members have a deeper understanding to share with their colleagues, they can suggest policy changes and things are at the board's level because that's not something necessarily that a site drives policy, curriculum, and instruction.
Yeah, so it's sort of like the purview.
Yes.
So if I'm informed...if I'm informed, based on what I'm informed of, I will use sort of my position to inform the decisions that I make moving forward.
Yes. And I...board policy, thank you, Dr. Lathan, for pointing this out. We have a board policy on committees, and so I think the first step would be for the two board members, along with myself, to establish the committee's purpose, the timeline, stakeholder groups or individuals, to be presented, all of the things that are included in board policy, and then bring it back to you to formalize that.
Okay, so are there people that would like to volunteer for that committee? Trustee Lathan?
I'll jump in.
Yeah, so the two of you.
Yeah, and I think I'll...you know, just to make it extra clear, that, right, like, school sites can do this themselves and look at their equity audit and think about how that affects them, and they become experts of their school site. And what this is kind of more doing is what are kind of the broader trends that are happening between school districts? Because they're not going to know what...I mean, it's called...between the school sites because they're not going to know what other school sites are doing and what's going on. And there may be some broader trends that are happening on that we can put support towards, and instead of having each school site have to kind of do the work again and again and again in each individual school site, as well as some of the things that we said about, you know, just driving the...our perspective in the work that we do, I think is also another piece there.
And I would love to know, you know, in this committee, like, the perspective of our superintendent, the perspective of other executive level cabinet members in terms of like how this impacts their work, too. Thinking about the LCAP, like how would our...could be some connections to the LCAP? And then I think it'll really help us kind of see a broader picture and come up with some strong goals and actions. So I do...I would like to take action on it, so...
Okay, what would the...what action would you like to take?
I would like to create...make a motion to...yeah. Create an Equity and Excellence Audit Board Committee, and we'll bring back the information. Superintendent Anello will get numbers from INCUS in terms of how much they charge to work with us on this.
So is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor, and I want to restate just for clarity, that we will develop the Equity and Excellence Audit Committee, and the guidance is for Superintendent Anello to bring back a quote.
Yes.
Okay, and it's been properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. All right, next, item C, Committee Formation Special Education. I believe this is yours as well, Dr. Jack.
Yes, so in a similar vein, special education has been across our state. We've...from our last report from Ms. Quinn, that it is a challenge. We know that. The numbers have gone up in terms of the number of students who have been identified. We have staff who feel like more students need to be identified and supported through special education services. And we also are in CIM, which is Compliance and Improvement Monitoring through California Department of Education. One thing that I'm noticing for ourselves, even though we receive a presentation from our special ed department, there's still, in my professional opinion, some depth of knowledge we need to know about special education in our district so that it'll inform the work that we do and the decisions we make as a board. And so I am proposing the same type committee, but for students...for special education so that we can have a deeper understanding of what's happening in our district and make decisions based on what we learn.
And would this be based on the special ed audit that's...
Based on the special ed audit, I think it...so I'm going to slow down. I think for this one, that's different. So the first one is more like an ad hoc...both of them are ad hoc committees, which is like a shorter-term committee, so we'll have a timeline for those. But the difference is that one comes with some information already prepared for us through the audit, right? This one might take a little more creativity in working with the staff in terms of what type of data are we looking for and why? What are the systems and structures in place? We might invite folks from CDE to come down to talk about, you know, the actual CIM. There are so many different options that we can take here. And so I think for this one, it's just going to mean a little bit more massaging with the superintendent and her staff around what this one could look like so that it is...we want it to be effective and beneficial for our students and for our decision-making.
Okay, and so this...are you making a motion?
Yes, I'm making a motion to create a Special Education Ad Hoc Board Committee.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to create a Special Education Ad Hoc Committee. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion on the floor properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries.
I want to be on that committee if possible.
Yeah, I was going to say I wanted to be on that committee as well.
Because I like...I've been involved with that a little time. a little time.
So we should probably figure that out now. Who wants to be on the committee?
And then are you limiting, like, what was your vision for?
So I don't know what the, I don't know if the law is you have to have only two board members because of, right?
Yeah.
So I will relinquish my desire to be on the committee if, you know, two other folks, if someone else wants to take my place, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
So what's the answer?
Oh, okay, so, yeah.
And?
Trustee Rocha.
Trustee for us?
Yeah.
All right, but I do want to drop in.
Yeah, of course, of course. So next is resolutions for first reading, there are none. Second, resolutions for immediate action, item A, Resolution 2023-24, 34 authorizes instructions to teach outside of credential authorization for the 2023-24 school year.
Just as you've indicated, this is for five individuals to provide home and hospital service to our teachers, or to our students across the district. So we're seeking approval through education code by resolution to allow them to do that.
And these are teachers that, or these teachers have credentials that are closely related to the field in which they'll be teaching, correct?
Yes, home and hospital is a wide variety of services, but as a credential teacher, they can provide that service clearly.
All right, so I have a, so I'll, any discussion from the board?
Hmm.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
All right, so I have a motion on the floor for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion on the floor, properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. All right, next is resolutions for second reading and action, there are none. Next is board policies for first reading, there are none. Next, there are board policies for second reading and action, there are none. Next, there are four items, and sort of in the interest of time, we are a little long in the tooth.
It's just for information purposes?
Yes, these are, yes, just for information. So please read those at your leisure. Which brings us to item 19, items, future agenda items from board members. Trustee Hernandez?
I will share more at our next board meeting.
Okay, trustee Dr. Jack?
Yes, we have SBA assessment results for '23. The dashboard, I know it's hot off the press. November, I believed, I believe ELA math came out, chronic absenteeism and graduate rate, and I think suspension came out in college career indicators in December. So I would love to have, if it's the will of the board, more information about it, either a presentation or something to give, keep us updated on what those results are and mean. And then lastly, at some point, an update on the work from the anti-bias grant that we received and principals are engaged in.
Okay. Trustee Rocha?
I'm fine.
Okay, all right, and I'm fine as well. Next, additional comments which exceeded the first 30-minute session. We sort of made an allowance for the teachers to give that extension earlier, so we want to thank the teachers for that. Next is reports, comments from board members. Trustee Rocha, we'll start with you.
I have my reports from the conference that I attended for the CSBA, and I'll pass it down. And there is also, I requested that we have an item copied for you, that you will be receiving in the mail, I imagine, with your package. And then also, like you bring, the trustee Hernandez, like you bring your book.
Yeah.
I thought this was appropriate, since we were talking about teachers and then, and how important they are to a student, and this is exactly what Dr. Rios had written about, and he was one of the presenters last year.
Yes, I grabbed that book as well when I had the opportunity.
So I'm gonna leave that with you. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Jack, Dr. Lathan?
Yes, I will not go through all of the schools, I'll break it up, but Ruby Bridges walked to school day, November 14th, went great at M&amp;O Grant. It was organized by a couple of teachers. Unfortunately, only have the name of one, Ms. Brenda Howell, so thanks to her, we walked around the community with a group of students, and they really talked about the importance of school integration and the right supports and all of that, and they were elementary schools kids, so it was so cute. I visited Turner Elementary, Carmen Dragon, Antioch High School, Antioch Middle School, Jack London, and Longtree. I'll just share a couple today, and then the next time I'll share more. But Turner Elementary School, the principal is new to Turner Elementary School, and her vision is around project-based learning. She's really focused on deeper learning, social-emotional learning in avid elementary, so that was nice to walk around and see some of that work in action. Carmen Dragon, Principal Hamer, shared that he received the preliminary results of his equity audit, and he was eager to kind of read through it and meet with someone from NCUS to talk more about the findings. He's proud of the school's culture and climate and SEL systems in place, and I will say that it was evident when I walked the classrooms that that was in place. They have their wellness rooms up and running, and kids were able to like, you know, move around. I was in one classroom, fourth grade classroom, the kid needed to move, he didn't, you know, move around because other kids were kind of sitting and working. He didn't even need to ask. He got up, went on and got on their stationary bike, rode it for a couple of minutes quietly, and went back to his seat and worked. And I was like, that is what we need, because some kids just need to move. And he knew he had a strategy to do that, so I thought that was awesome. And there really, the principal talked about seeing a shift of, of instruction in, not just in the school, but in the district, and developing common formative assessments. And lastly, I'll talk about Antioch High School, and then I'll do the other ones on the next cycle, the next board meeting. Principal had their equity audit in October, and as well, he was, you know, waiting to really look through it. He talked about strengthening pathways, which Dr. Lindsay talked about, and bringing all of their pathways into the 21st century and offering students more pathways they're interested in. He's very proud of, and I can see why, the media center. So he, you know, talked about the positives of Deer Valley's media center and how they are trying to also build theirs, and it was awesome. I got to meet with the teacher and see the students working, so I can see how they're really going to expand that. They have a strong vision, the principal and the teacher in that area. He also talked about, he learned that 50% of student truancies happened in the morning and during the last period, and how they actually restructured some of their time. So now zero period starts later, and seventh period does not include some of the heavier classes such as Algebra I, because many of the students play sports, and so they don't miss that. Now their seventh period is more aligned to, students who play sports can actually do that without missing, you know, like a math class, so now there's like PE in the afternoon. So I'd just love to see some of the school sites and the site principals making decisions based on data and what the students need. And then I'll share about Antioch Middle School, Jack London, and Longtree at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Hernandez?
Great, I'll just highlight three events. The first is, I welcomed a number of elected officials from across the state of California, including city officials and school board members, to Oakley's Big Break as part of the Water Education for Latino Leaders Program. So it's great to see, you know, leaders across the state of California coming to check out what we're doing on this side of the delta in the East Bay area, and show that, and talk a little bit about the great work that we're doing here in the Antioch Unified School District, in the city, and kind of beyond in the greater East Bay. I attended the City of Antioch Unity Event, which I thought was such a great event that highlighted people that were receiving the key to the city. There was three different faith leaders who got to share a message of unity, and I think it was just a really nice and beautiful event, although like this meeting, it went a little bit long over what it was scheduled. And then lastly, I was at a talk with Sal Khan, who created Khan Academy, and it was such a great event, because I didn't fully realize how much students use this as a supplemental resource for their learning. And so it got me thinking about the different ways that we can maybe start thinking about the box to help support our students, and the different ways that they already naturally navigate the space that we're in right now. Because we recognize that we need more resources for our students, but they actually recognize that as well, and they're trying to find solutions too, and we should be having more conversations about that, instead of trying to figure out how do we get the way we think about these resources to them, and see, how do they think about resources, and how maybe we can empower that? So I thought it was, it was such a fascinating time to be at that talk with him. And that concludes my comments.
Okay, so I'll keep mine brief. So as I always mention, we have our, my fraternity's education mentoring program that I oversee. And this, a few weeks, a week ago, maybe, we had a fundraiser, so that was well-attended, so we were able to raise funds. And so for folks who may not know, over the last two years, we've given about $25,000 in scholarships to graduating high school students, and we've also, you know, helped them with college applications and college admissions and things like that. So super proud to be a part of that, but again, graying as we speak, because my brain never turns off. In addition to that, I attended the Ruby Bridges Program at Dallas Ranch Middle. I believe Ms. Velma was involved in coordinating that, along with Bridget Spires and team over at Dallas Ranch. It was really well-attended. I believe Contra Costa Fire was there, as well as a number of vendors that were providing services and having conversations with the kiddo, so there was a lot more stuff to do. The last thing I'll say is, this Friday, I will be speaking at the, there's a conference at Turow University on Friday. I'll be speaking about the opioid settlement funds. And for folks who don't know, this last year and a half or so, there's about a $50 billion settlement for pharmaceutical companies, you know, for, without admitting any fault.
Right.
About the increase in opioid use. And so what I'm going to be talking about is how a bordering county is planning to utilize those funds and the impact that it'll have on the community. So if you're interested, I can definitely share that information with you, and that's about it. I will stop there.
And I would just like to say thank you to Dr. Lewis for serving as president this past year, and thank you to Dr. Lathan for serving as vice president. We thank you both.
I think it would be great to adjourn the meeting in thankfulness for their service.
I, I will second that.
So I'll go ahead. Yeah, so I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting in honor of the service that President